Waiting on Counselor Ardeedy, but we're going to go ahead and get started while he joins the ISM. So I'm going to call to order our King City Regular City Council Meeting at 6:02 PM, and we'll move on to roll call. Would you like me to do that? Counselor Gerhart.
Here.
Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Tysoe.
Here.
Counsel President Raiverman.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Ardeedy, welcome.
Here.
And Mayor Kazmersky here. Okay, at this time, if you would like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Our next item on the agenda is City Council Minutes. Those are not ready for us to approve at this meeting, so we will do that at the next one. So that brings us to our special presentations. The first we have is from Prossman, an update on where we are with our city manager recruitment process. Is he online right now? Not yet. Okay, we will go ahead and move on to our Washington County presentation then.
Okay.
Absolutely. Please.
Actually, while we get started, I will hand out something.
Thank you.
We're going to give kind of an update with the Sheriff's Office, talk about some of the three teams and some countywide services that we have. My name is Dave Brusley. I am jail commander. I have been with the Sheriff's Office since 1998. Actually, Tim and I got hired together, so we spent a lot of our career together.
I'm Tim Canammon, the Division Commander for the Investigations Division at the Washington County Sheriff's.
Both got hired in the patrol division and kind of went up through the ranks over the last 27 years. Do you have the presentation up on the screen that we can bring up, please? We're going to take turns, kind of go back and forth and spread the love with. Yeah, I'll probably call. I'm not known for being very coordinated around that. Perfect. Okay. Okay, that's us, King City Council. You want to hit the next slide, please?
That's us again.
Yes, that's us again. So this is Washington County, obviously. Some of the services that the Sheriff's Office provides, we manage the only county jail in Washington County, so the jail that we have is also your jail as well, and any custody that your police officers arrest end up in our jail, and we maintain that. We also provide some countywide services that we're going to talk about to the 611-plus community members that live in Washington County. And we are the primary first responders for some of those rural, urban, and the unincorporated areas of Washington County. We work very closely with a lot of the city agencies because of unincorporated areas that kind of tuck in within the city on the east side of the county, and of course, the west side is mostly rural. And the vision for the Sheriff's Office is to be the safest major urban county in Oregon, and that is defined, everyone says, well, what's that mean? You can define it in a bunch of different ways. For us, we define it as a combination of persons and property crimes, so reduce those to be the safest. Community, persons, and property crimes are kind of what impacts most people on a daily basis. Next slide, please.
Handing out our annual report, and that's just kind of a highlight of 2024. There's also QR codes. Room wants to scan it, we're not going to go over that because we don't have time today, but we brought it, so you could look it over at your leisure.
Jail, where I work, where I've worked for the past three years. And so staffing update is, you've probably heard presentations or news articles or social media posts about the staffing issue with the jail. In 2023, just like a lot of businesses and agencies, we had a lot of staff leave for different reasons. Retired, moved out of the area, decided to go into a different field of work, and it really impacted the ability for the jail to operate as it was designed to. And so we had to shut down some of the pods, we had to shrink the size of the jail to fit the staff that we had. And so right now, our capacity as of today is 388 beds. We're normally 572 beds. 572 beds. Washington County Jail is the second smallest jail per capita in the state, 388. I didn't do the numbers, but it's probably one of the smallest jails per capita. Our staffing has gotten better. The county invested in us to pay a recruitment firm to come out and up the recruitment for both patrol and the jail. That has been paying off. We have been hiring deputies on both patrol and the jail over the past year, and we have significantly improved our staffing level, so much so that we were able to open a pod for a short period of time, but now we have to close it again because of a major infrastructure upgrade. If anybody goes through Hillsborough, goes down by the jail and Sheriff's Office Headquarters, you'll see cones everywhere, giant cranes, no parking areas, why they do this infrastructure upgrade. And that is a full HVAC replacement. Each section of pod has its own HVAC unit that has been there since the jail was built in 1998. That equipment is failing. It's running 24 hours a day, seven days a week with no break, and so that had to get upgraded. That also includes some redundancy to the electrical system, the fire suppression system, plumbing, hot and cold water chases, domestic water lines, a full roof replacement as part of that, it would leak and flood. And then also, I think I already mentioned the fire suppression system. So that's going on now. It started May, June, and we expect it to wrap up in June of 2026. As things come back online, we can start opening the jail and opening those pods up, but right now, we are shut down, we have three pods closed at this current time. We're also in the middle of doing a jail capacity study that the county paid for to figure out what size jail do we need as we look at the next version of the Washington County Jail. So that capacity study has been completed, and it has been presented to the Board of Commissioners to look at, and the next step is to figure out what do we want the jail to be, how do we want to expand it, make it bigger so it can better serve Washington County.
Sheriff's Office hosts our interagency teams, and those teams provide expertise in a lot of different ways, tactical negotiations tools, I have members from law enforcement agencies within Washington County. It's much more efficient to have a multi-agency team than have each law enforcement agency have their own team. It's cheaper buying equipment, staffing, overtime, plus we get a better response, we get a much more robust team. Our hostage negotiation team is also an interagency team. We have a crash analysis reconstruction team that does major crashes, and we also have our major crimes team, which is run by the DA's office. So anytime there's an officer-involved shooting or a homicide, those resources are available to every law enforcement agency in the county. Our special teams respond anywhere in the county and sometimes outside the county that support Portland, Clackamas County, Multnomah County, and other agencies as needed, as will our major crimes team. If we're called by another county to help investigate, we often send investigators to do.
Another countywide resource and interagency team is our community violence reduction team, Covert Team. It was formed just about a year ago today to go after some of those higher-level crimes that occur inter-agency between the different cities and unincorporated areas throughout the county. It focuses on removing illegal firearms, victim support, and redirecting at-risk individuals. It also, as part of that grant that funds the Covert Team, a NIBIN terminal, and do you know what NIBIN stands for?
So it's a listing machine where we can run cartridges that have been located as evidence on scenes, and it looks at the specific markings on that casing, and it can basically track it back to guns. Also do bullets as well as that, but NIBIN is a DEA, or not a DEA, it's a firearms.
Analysis?
Analysis.
Terminal? Oh, A T S. I'll call that one firearms.
That runs this system, it's a nationwide data collection system. So we put a casing in, our terminal, it goes out nationwide, and it can be compared to firearms across the country. So we've had great success. The other thing I'll say, so Covert lives in the Investigations Division, so falls under in my unit. It works very closely with our narcotics unit, Westside Interagency Narcotics Team, and they focus specifically on trying to get illegal guns off the street. And as you can tell, we've had great success in less than a year with 223 firearms seized. It blew me away, it was a pilot program that we started in October, what the results were going to be, but the need, the concept's been proven, and there's definitely a need. And Covert works throughout Washington County as well, so if any law enforcement agency has a case where they think that there's gun trafficking, stolen guns, or violent crimes being committed, Covert can be a resource.
And I think it also goes to highlight, it's a small team, it's made up of District Attorney's Office, Hillsborough PD, Bearden PD in Washington County, and it's only a total of, is it three?
So it's four operational people, I have two detectives, and I have two sergeants on the team, and then the District Attorney's Office. I have a lieutenant who they report to, and that lieutenant reports to me. It's really small, we're trying to expand it.
But those kind of, I think you probably sold it, downplayed it a little bit. Those numbers are phenomenal. For a team that small, that's just starting out for a year, to see those kind of arrests and those kind of firearms taken off the street that could have been used in violent crime is truly amazing, and the hope is to have that grow and involve more agencies into the future.
Another thing we're finding with that team is, and that picture you can see in the lower right-hand corner is a ghost manufactured lower for an AR-15 rifle. So we're seeing parts being manufactured that have no serial numbers on them, so we're able to locate those and get those off the street.
Next slide, please. Search and Rescue. Is this mine? I'll take it. This is really cool. So our search and rescue is a lead team of volunteers, is how it's referred to, who play that role in emergency responses throughout the county. What is really amazing is that they're cadets. They're kids, 15 up to 21, that make up this group. A lot of them, their parents are involved, the Sheriff's Office or their local to Washington County that are hired, embedded, and trained through the Cadet Academy to go out and do those missions like find lost people, down aircraft, evidence searches. They're on a mission today, I'm not sure what their mission's for, but they're out on a mission today, and they're on call, and they respond. And it's amazing to see the level of work that these young people do out in, not only in Washington County, but they get called to other counties as well. And a lot of counties in Oregon use adults or professional organizations to do this, and we've used cadets for years, as long as I've been there and before, these cadets have been out there doing that. In 2024, they had 48 missions in unincorporated Washington County, and then all the cities in Washington Counties as well, Bearden, Tiger, City, Hillsborough, even King City. Any city agency that has an issue with, sometimes a lost at-risk adult, or if there's a major crime they need evidence search, we'll call out the cadets, and they'll come do a grid search. And it is really impressive to see them with their gear on, out working at a well-oiled machine. It's impressive.
A component to that is our Project Lifesaver program and the Help Me Home program, and these are resources that we offer. It hits close to home with me, my mother-in-law has Alzheimer's, and so if we have individuals in our community who are prone to wandering off or have dementia or Alzheimer's, it's a tool that we have that can keep them monitored, so we can track their locations if they wander away from a care facility or from home. Help Me Home is a voluntary program for people who may have difficulty communicating, may have medical conditions, but it's a program where we can send them up, and we can also help quickly identify where they are, reunite them with their caregivers. And so far, we have 22 registered participants in Project Lifesaver and 101 in Help Me Home.
That little news article blurb up there from July highlights what our SAR folks can do in a single call. In that incident, the man was reported missing and had major cognitive decline and was unable to care for himself, and so he was at risk. He was late on critical life-sustaining medication, so he needs to take medication, and deputies discovered he'd been missing for about two hours longer than initially reported to dispatch. So a lot of times when we get that initial call, the information isn't complete, and it's usually worse. In this case, it was. And so the timeline to locate him was really tight, and they had to get out there and find him. So we have SAR advisors, those are deputies that work with the cadets, was first to arrive, and paged the cadets to come join them. He immediately deployed the Project Lifesaver tracking equipment. This gentleman had the tracking equipment on him, and was confirmed that he was somewhere around. They knew he was there, they just didn't know where he was. It's not like a GPS, it's more like electronic triangulation to find him. And so it was in a neighborhood with very terrain and green spaces, forested areas, a lot of the neighborhoods that we have have those forested areas with ravines and all those kind of things. They arrived, the SAR arrived, joined the deputies and located the man, and he was spotted at the bottom of a ravine, fell nearly 30 feet down in that ravine and couldn't get up. He had suffered significant injury to his head, and while working to get the man out, it was found that a large bull elk was in the area, and the neighbors later confirmed it was very aggressive and territorial. So not only did he have the environment and the weather, but there was a bull elk out there who probably didn't like him wandering around his area. They quickly got the plan together, and that's the actual incident there, and executed it and got to him without delay, and they were able to secure him and retrieve him and get him the medical help. And they learned that without a doubt, without their actions in the patrol and SAR group, that that man very likely could have died. And so that's the kind of resources that's available to everybody, and that's the kind of stuff that kids are doing with us. It really is amazing.
We have a remotely operated vehicle team, which is, they do a couple of different things, probably mostly what you'll see or think about is our drones. We're seeing more and more drone use in law enforcement because we can deploy a drone in a house instead of putting a person in a house, and it creates a much more, a great safety barrier for people. We also have robots that can go in. Law enforcement's really moving towards drones. Some people ask, well, are they replacing canines? No, they're not replacing canines. They're just a supplemental tool that we can use in a couple of different ways. Oftentimes, we use them with our SWAT team when they go out, and there's a situation where somebody will come, barricaded subject who won't come out of their house, we'll put a drone in and see how many people are in the house, what they're doing, whether there's any weapons. We use, the WEN team recently used one to actually capture on a search warrant that we were serving, a person coming out of a room with drugs in their hand. The drone followed her into a bathroom, and we could actually film as she was trying to destroy the narcotics that they were serving a search warrant on. So really great technology that we're using that captures video and keeps the community and keeps our officers safer. And it's a multi-agency team as well. We have units in Hillsborough Police Departments right now as operators. Other law enforcement agencies around Washington County, around the country are used. I was recently at some training last year with some people in police departments that are actually using drones as first responders. So you have drones on rooftops in cities, and when a call comes out, the drone is dispatched, and it can save, it can go out and locate whether there's actually an incident occurring, if that incident that's being called in is occurring, to prevent law enforcement from responding when lights and sirens, if they don't need to. It's really neat and evolving technology. There's a video.
I think the next slide, I think it's a fairly short video. Oh, is it a minute? That's short.
There's no sound.
No, there's no sound.
It's just an overview of drone, how they can follow somebody.
Yeah. So there's the guy running, and that's the quality of the image that we have, and drones are operated different ways, but they can relay that information to the deputies on the ground that are looking for him. It is cool. They are helping Bearden PD. Guy's ran from a stolen vehicle. They are taking, it looks like his hands are up, taking him into custody. It is really good tool for us. It was a dog. It was a dog on that one, too. They work very well with the dogs. If the dog's tracking, the operator drone will be overhead, kind of ahead of where the dog's going, and can help spot them. So the dog's really good, combined with a drone, it's pretty amazing.
And these are burglar suspects that were running from the scene, that the drone was able to.
Most of our drone operators are licensed to the FAA to fly the drone, you have to have licensing for it, you have to know what the rules are, especially for law enforcement, what we can and can't do, and where we can and can't fly. And they have to continue training and get constant updating. There, oh, this is a good one.
Yeah, this is an example of, you know, tactical call where we punch a hole in the window and put a drone in the.
Yeah, like Commander Tamron said, go through a broken window, fly, camera in there, not putting anybody at risk, but thinking land and just watch, and it's really cool. And some of them are really expensive, but those little ones that you saw, those are consumer-level drones that are probably $500 to maybe $1,500, which is a lot to you and me, but compared to injury to one of our deputies or officers, or the suspect, it's nothing. So looking forward, what do we have going up? In November of 2025, there is a levy that will be on the ballot for a public safety levy, it's 34 S346. It helps fund countywide operations for the Sheriff's Office for enforcement, it helps fund staffing for the jail to keep our jail at full operating capacity. It will fund District Attorney Office resources, community corrections, juvenile, and the Family Justice Center, which is a domestic violence resource center for people in need, and they're changing their name soon, and I do not remember the name, but Family Justice Center, I apologize, they're changing it. But you'll see that on the ballot, you'll start to see signs going up. And that, I believe, is the end of our presentation. Do you have any questions for us at all?
I have a question about the drones. I see a highway 99, and she's been going up and down the highway. They caught them on the same way, and they caught them for trailer shots, and then they knocked around, and you're all on the ground by someone else.
Wouldn't be, unless there was a police operation going on, there wouldn't be our drones.
They go every night, it's truly fascinating to watch them.
I would, those are probably, probably are not, yeah, like I said, they're probably not our drones. If it's a nuisance or if it's a problem, you can call it in, and there are resources licensed to figure out who it is.
I'm not doing anything wrong, so I don't care.
Drones and applications of surveying now, we've used them in crash reconstruction, so they're multifunctional.
When you've got part of the jail closed for construction, and you're at lower capacity, if you're full, what do you do with the people that, do you let people out?
Yeah, it's a forced release, is what we call it. And basically, everybody who comes into the jail and gets lost in the jail gets a public safety score. The higher the public safety score, the higher the risk. And the higher the public safety score, the more likely they are to stay in jail. The challenge that we have is because the type, because we've been closed and because of, before that COVID, the type of person we have in custody is a very high-risk public safety. So when we're at 388 and 389 comes in, a corporal and a sergeant have to look at everybody that we have in the jail and look at this person, so look at the safety score and decide. And this is oversimplifying it, but is this person a higher risk of safety, public safety than this person is? But they look at, they also look at the crimes, they look at the circumstances of the arrest. If it's a domestic violence or the person fought with the police, that may not generally, that may bump up the public safety score some, but they also have a discretion like, this, you know, that person is, yeah, they don't spend the money. Yeah, and so it's very challenging.
In that same, Dane, do you have cooperative agreements with other jail facilities for certain situations?
We do. We have been contracting with the Inhill County Sheriff's Office for, I think, probably the last two and a half years to house adults in custody down there. People who are sentenced will house down there. The challenge we have with that is, we have a very high percentage of AICs who are not sent, adults in custody inmates, that are not sentenced. And when somebody isn't sentenced, they have a lot of court hearings and a lot of court procedures that are here. They also have to have access to their attorneys, which are here. And so we're limited on who we can send down to Inhill County because our percentage of unsentenced adults in custody is so high. So we do send them down there, not as much as we would like, because we wouldn't get any savings, it's a personnel savings, we'd be running back and forth all the time. So we do contract with them, and that has worked out very well for us. Question?
I do. After the drone, do you get much pushback from the public over your use of the drones at all? Do they embrace it pretty good? Yeah, because usually it's isolated events in a community, and so they hear the lights and, or see the lights, and they hear the sirens, so they know something's going on. I mean, there are people out there who absolutely say, you shouldn't define that, you know, it's loud. I think we get more complaints about our plane than we do.
Oh, really? It will circle for a long time.
It will circle. Have you had helicopters?
No. I wish.
Yeah.
No police agencies are out here that I'm aware of have helicopters. There are a lot of them.
So you mentioned in the beginning something about building improvements and HVAC. Has that been funded already, or is that what you're looking for?
No, that has already been funded, it was paid for through ARPA funds, paid for the majority of, not all of that, all the infrastructure updates for the jail. And so that's already done. This levy coming up is a public safety levy that pays for the DA's office, countywide services. DA's office, it does pay, would pay for, if approved, it would pay for staffing for the jail. Fully staffed, it would help pay for victims' resources, community corrections, juvenile, but it's.
People's programs, no buildings.
What happens if it doesn't pass?
Yeah, we have, the people that are supported by that levy, well, if it doesn't pass in November, we'll try again in May, but ultimately, we won't be able to provide the services that we provide with the large funds if it doesn't pass.
Is this a replacement, or is it an addition?
So it's not a replacement technically because it's, there's a rate increase, so we have to call it, we can't call it a renewal, I guess we call it a replacement. It would be a replacement. The old one, yeah, the old one falls off, and the new one will come in, replace it at the current rate.
What's the least that committee, if any, oversees your department, to see that the money that you're spending every year is well spent, and there's no fat or excess or things that could be cut back or a little bit more?
Yeah, great question.
You know, anything? Is there any oversight, anybody watching that going on?
Yeah, our budget is approved by the county commissioners, so we have to give them our budget, what we are looking for every single year, and they're the ones that provide the funds. So the no funding comes directly to us, it all goes through the county.
So my understanding is they look that we've got the money, but nobody's really watching what is going to happen.
For this levy in particular, or for levis in general?
Just oversight of what you're spending before you turn to the trough, asking people to increase their property taxes and the money, because we're a mainly over-55 community. I know that doesn't matter to anybody, because we're only 5,000 people, and you're talking about all Washington County, but it matters to me, because I live in a community, and so does my retired father and my mother. And these levies, bonds, taxes, income taxes, gas taxes, utility taxes are pushing them out of King City. Why? Because they're on fixed incomes. And I wanted, I want people to hear that, it's not that we don't support you, my husband was a sheriff, he's a thief. It's not that we don't have respect for you, it's just that people keep coming here with their hand out, money, 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 and they don't understand or they don't want to hear because it's not popular, because then they say.
Because then they say, oh, well, if you don't give us this, then people are going to come out and we're not going to have beds and there are going to be relief and, and people are frightened by that and then they vote for these things and then guess what, they have to move because it's uncomfortable.
I understand. There is, through the normal budget approval process that the county has, there is public presentations where people can come and speak and give feedback and evaluate that. They're elected officials like you all are, so they do have that feedback loop. Well.
Well, to your point, we, we've had significant budget cuts in the general fund over the last few years, so there are, we're having to cut funds and cut programs and, and we need to do what we can with the money that we do have.
No, I appreciate what you said, thank you. Absolutely.
I forgot to mention, I think you guys are doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
I just wonder, are you guys as good as our guys here?
Not even close.
Bernie's a much better golfer than I am. He and Matt are all.
Yeah.
Although I did park in the police parking spot.
It's not a ticket on your car.
Probably, I'll pay it, I'll pay it. Thank you very much, thank you for coming, guys.
How many cadets do you have?
How many cadets do we have?
At least hit the bin here. It might be in that, it might be in the annual report. I don't know off the top of my head because.
I'm just curious. I think that's a great.
It's a partial number of people come in and graduate out of the program, but.
It's a lot. I don't.
In the seventies. Peanly High School.
Yep.
Yep, that's really good if you know somebody, a young, young person that, that is interesting that it's really good at, at developing leadership, confidence, ability to translate into adulthood, for sure.
Great program.
It is good, thank you.
Of, of the two hundred and twenty-three firearms, most of those are illegal firearms or ghost guns or?
Illegal in the sense that they were obtained by the criminal actors, illegal, either through burglaries, through straw purchasers. They may have, at one point have been purchased legally, but they came into the actor's hands illegally.
Stolen or?
A lot of straw purchasers, one of the cases that we worked over. It's somebody who can legally purchase guns, but is not purchasing them for themselves,
Okay, sure.
Purchasing them to sell on the black market.
My last question. Is crime per capita going up or down?
I'm sorry.
Is crime per capita going up or down?
Depends on what metric you look at. Washington County is extremely safe. We're seeing, what my team is seeing is an uptick in fraud, romance scams, bit currency scams, things like that. So property crime, certain property crimes are going up, but violent crimes are really usually low. I have not seen a huge influx in violent crimes or.
King City, I would, I would imagine there's a lot of scams and.
I would, so, you know, since I had operational oversight of, of when I was in patrol, as a patrol lieutenant, operational oversight of south cities, which included King City, so I worked with Chief Capula and Department on a regular basis. It's really, I mean, it was historically been extremely safe, but yes, I would imagine that, that your community would be targeted more aggressively by scammers, whether text scammers, email scams, phone scams. Yeah. Those are the ones that we can get because they're physically present. The ones through email or phone that usually are in other countries that we have. Having people lose their life savings on these schemes. I read an article the other day that somebody believed they were in love, in a relationship with Nellie Corder and gave, gave whoever that was pretending to be Nellie, Nellie Corder, professional women's golfer, like seventy-five thousand dollars. It's, it isn't rational. But yeah, they're definitely targeting the older elderly communities.
Yes, well, I, I do apologize, thank you for being here. We do need to move on with the rest of our agenda.
Steve, a question, thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Steve, if you can hear us, we will go ahead and take an update on, from Prossman, on our city manager recruitment process.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Well, thank you, sorry for the technical difficulties here, but let's see, we'd be happy to chat a bit about what we have going on and see what, if, if there's any questions I can answer as well. Let's see, can you hear me okay at this point?
We can, thank you.
Good, well, thank you. So, and again, appreciate being in, party meeting tonight, sorry for the technical issues. I wanted to let you know that we have been receiving applications. We have eight applications in today, off to a pretty reasonable start. And at this stage, I don't review the applications in any depth at this, this point, it's better to do that as I, as I see them as a group as opposed to individually. And then one of the things we will probably want, it's time for us to think about, is when we would be able to get together and for a, what we refer to as a work session, this is when I would present to you the, as a group, the individual candidates that have applied on paper, you would see them. I would also at that point have interviews done and report about each of the interviews. I would expect that this would take about an hour and a half of your time. And then for that work session, as I've chatted a bit with your city attorney, the decision that she would need to work through is whether or not that qualifies as an executive session. That is the, the best way to deal with it, if it qualifies, in that the information that for these candidates at this point is privileged, they haven't really released their names go public at that point, and so we would find some other tools if necessary to discuss them. Another thing that we have coming up, of course, is the final interview that'll take place about two to three weeks after we have that work session. And so we wanted to look for some time for that final interview as well. And that's at this, this stage, we should plan on that being an all-day process. If that is around the weekend or middle of the week is up to your collective schedules. And I know it can be challenging to find, as people that are as busy as you're, as you are, as council members and, as counselors and mayor, to find a common date, but it's best to, to work towards those things early on now. So those were a few things in front of us and a couple of things I wanted to, to just touch bases with you on.
Steve, can you remind us when the application deadline closes? Was it the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, so we're, we're closing at the end of the month. And I need to look at the exact date to, to help us all here, excuse me for a moment, get that in front of me. The twenty-sixth is the first review date. So what with the, on October twenty-sixth, I'll start reviewing the applications, I'll also start inviting candidates to interview, and I should hope to have those interviews completed by about October fourth, along with a report written as well. It might be the fourth or a little bit later, depending upon when the candidates can meet with me, but we try and move as quickly as possible.
You mean November fourth?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that, what?
You said October fourth, I'm assuming you meant November fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do mean November fourth, not October fourth, thank you, yeah, clarifying that.
So should, should we be looking at a work session, then how close after the fourth? That week, looks like the fourth is a Tuesday. Can you hear me, Steve? Sorry.
Okay.
So Steve, can you hear the mayor, she was saying, would, would we want to do it the week of November fourth, the work session here with city council?
Yes, that would be the ideal time, either that week or perhaps the following week, but it would take approximately an hour and a half.
Okay. I think we should try to shoot for as soon as we can. Yeah, well, that's the day he's going to be done, so it would be fifth, sixth or seventh, I think is what we'll look at, and we can have.
So unfortunately.
Managers send out an email, we get that scheduled, chief. Sorry, I just feel like I can only call you chief. Send out an email so we can schedule either the fifth, sixth or seventh for a work session, depending on availability, okay.
And just to be clear, I do have some previous commitments on the sixth and seventh, so, where I'm going to be in the Olympia area where I have final interviews with a client. So we could do the fifth or sometime after the seventh, so.
Okay. Trying to figure out the fifth, okay, and would you be here in person for that?
Yes, I would certainly want to be there in person if at all possible.
And then you were saying final interviews two, three weeks after that?
Yes. Issues.
Now, first we give to someone, okay. We had spoken about potentially, should we be putting together, and maybe this is just a discussion for the council and Missy, a hiring committee for those final interviews? Should it be the whole council? Should it be select council members and staff members?
Right, so there's a couple of different options. I would encourage you to involve the entire council for the, what we refer to as the decision makers panel. Now, we do have to be careful about when that decision is made, and your city attorney is well versed in this and, yeah, we'll work through those details. But the, the point is so that the, you as council members can share the experience and you have the same information. And when you go into whatever level of deliberations you go into, you'll, you'll be able to relate to that experience you've shared with one another. It's going to work out best that way. You can also involve some other panels that we have ways to facilitate or, and, and bring you some information from them, and you could see what their thoughts are on different candidates. And if that is a group of employees or a group of community stakeholders, you know, that, those are certainly possibilities, we can do that either way. In fact, it's often best to mix those panels so the employees and stakeholders are together. We could have one panel of seven or so, or we could have two panels of seven or so stakeholders to provide some input for you. We do, when I'm facilitating those, this and working with your team there, the objective is going to be for those folks to, to those stake, for those stakeholders to explain what you, what they see as their, as the strengths of each candidate and what they see of any, any concerns they have. And so we would focus the conversation and the responses to you as counselors on those two subjects, the strengths and concerns.
Maybe that's something that we can kind of hash out at the work session.
It absolutely is, that's a perfect time to do it, you're right.
Those are all the questions I have, does anybody else have?
I do have a question. This is Counselor Gerhardt. Steve, I can't remember if I asked you this question when you and I chatted, but do you do a background check in the beginning of the application process or, or, or is it later in that process?
So we do a background check at two, two stages in the application process. Early on, we do a, a search of media to see if there's any newspaper or other type of media reports related to the candidate that is being interviewed, that I'm about to interview. If there is, then I, I will ask them about that in the interview. And then after you have selected who you wish to invite to final interview, we contact, of course, all of those folks and we get releases on their, on their references. And so they will release us to contact references. We, we make contact with those people and we will write up a summary of what that conversation was like and provide that to you the day of the final interview. So you'll have that. And you will have also a background check with regards to verifying their education, of looking at their driving record to the extent that that's available to us. We use a service for that, that does the, the driving record, education record, criminal background record, sex offender record and a couple of other things. And so you'll have that information for you going into that final interview. Does that help, counselor?
Yes, it, it does.
Do you have a couple of questions?
I'm, I'm a little bit worried in the past, I think this community has been burned and, and we're, I don't know, call it whistled bit or what, we want to make sure that the background process is very, very thorough. The only reason I bring that up.
I can appreciate it, and so, yes, we, we do a, the, we ask for the, each candidate to provide us with three references that are peers, three references that are subordinates and three references that are supervisors at one time or another. So it's, but sometimes referred to as a three hundred and sixty degree reference check.
The total of nine references then.
Yeah, that's, that's what we request, to be honest, not everyone, not all those references will respond, for most people, just so you know, but that's what we get, yes.
Is it possible to have that, I apologize, to get a list of those references before choosing who we want for the final interview? Because I know we had spoken about that, you know, if they, if they don't respond or perhaps there's not a good reference, maybe we don't want to narrow it too much initially?
Yeah, so at the point we're getting references, we have a, quite a bit of paperwork that the candidate has to go through, and they really have to ask themselves if they're going to allow contacting their current employer, and that's often a dilemma for a candidate. They may, maybe their current employer knows that they're in a job search, but maybe their current employer doesn't. And so frankly, early on, before you've decided you have an interest, it's difficult for, for the candidate and for us to get the candidate to release information. They need to know that they're kind of on a short, that they are on a shortlist to be, to be able to respond to that effectively.
Thank you.
Steve, I understand that, what you're saying, but I do share in Counselor Gerhardt's concern. The council is concerned about the background and I'm wondering, I mean, I've done a lot of HR work where I'm able to get some employment. I can do a background check officially through a background check company that can check their prior employment to see if they've ever been fired from an employee, any kind of employment arrangement. I can do a background check to see if they've had any criminal activity in, in Oregon or all fifty states. I mean, it costs money, but it is, it is something that can be done. If, if this is something that the city council feels strongly about, is this something that we could add on to have you do or is this something you cannot do?
We're doing exactly what you described, but we're doing it before you interview the candidates, however, after you've shortlisted the candidates. So, and there is a cost, it's approximately a hundred and fifty dollars per person that we're, we're doing a background check. The cost varies over some, some minor amounts, but the run number is a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, because I heard you say that your background check was a social one, you do social media, but I didn't hear that you're going to go back and check their prior employment, criminal history.
Oh, yes, yes.
Which is important, I didn't hear that, I haven't heard that mentioned yet, so I wanted to clarify that.
Interrupt, verify education, driving record, criminal record, not employment record.
Right, that, so we do the.
Employment record.
And we'll, we'll do the, the employment record we do in, in basically in terms of, excuse me, the names of individuals they have for us to contact. What we don't do, we don't do any social media checking. That's, that is highly subjective, individual interpretation, and it just doesn't warrant, doesn't warrant us getting involved in the social media piece of this. So just to be clear about that, you had mentioned social media. But we do the, the commercial service that I, that I mentioned. Sterling was the name of, they just changed their names, but we do a Sterling report for these individuals that, that you've authorized us to invite to final interview. And, and as I mentioned, there's a cost for each one of those, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, as I said.
Further questions?
A quick question, Steve, you said there were eight applications?
So far, yes. So far, yes.
All right, Steve, thank you so much for being here. We, it looks like we've got some things to schedule and we'll keep it moving.
Great, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the technical issues here, but appreciate your patience. Glad to be able to
No, we appreciate it. Yes, thank you so much for being here. Enjoy your evening. All right, next up, we have open forum. Open forums intended to ensure a community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda or make suggestions for future agendas. And it's time the council be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda, with the exception of public hearings, which we don't say. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Do we have a sign-in sheet? Anybody online? Anybody online? Online. Anybody online? If you would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand. Hearing none. We will close open forum and move on to unfinished business. First item is TSP relook and supplemental info. I assumed Max was going to be here for that. He is online, perfect. Max, if you can hear us, we are ready to talk about TSP.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Hello, everyone.
Hi. We've got your memo and the resolution you want to go through.
Yes, so this memo's been drawn up, or the resolution was drawn up, basically authorizing staff to dedicate resources, seek funding, take all the necessary steps to explore amending the TSP. It's a pretty broad, like, high-level resolution, so there's nothing in there that would restrict staff in these efforts. It's going to be used if we do seek grants, that this will be attached as a, as a letter of community support. It should provide the staff with everything that they need to seek all the kind of necessary funding and resources and help from organizations like LLC and Metro to get this thing going. Does anyone have any questions about the resolution itself?
I do. I, I just have a few questions, mainly not just for you, Max, but for the entire council. I don't know, do we want to just restrict ourselves to, as it writes here, it says that we want to potentially adopt a different alignment? What if we decided we don't want this TSP at all? We want to maybe sell it over to Sherwood or Beaverton or Tigard and let them have it since the flow of traffic would flow easier out Roy Rogers Road instead of trying to force it through King City? Is that an option that we could explore?
I, I don't believe that that's an option that we could explore, given that the TSP is already King City law. And also, one thing to consider with that is, one example that I like to point towards is Tigard's River Terrace 2.0. So we have Kingston Terrace, which we're developing right now. Kingston Terrace has varied density throughout. The maximum density is in the town center, 20 units per lot, going down to future development, potentially in the Rivermead area and the rural neighborhood community, which is eight units per lot. River Terrace is a max density of 22 units per lot. So if the city never provided itself with its own master plan and its own accommodating TSP, there would be the potential that, you know, if Tigard was to come in, they would have no quarrel about maximizing the density more than Kingston Terrace already has. And with the transportation
We could negotiate that. We can also overturn the ordinance. I mean, there's a process for us to overturn the ordinance, isn't there? We can, if the council elects as one of its options that, hey, this would be better to sell to another city, Sherwood, ask them to pay us five, $10 million, take that money, we reinvest it in some high-yield CDs. We use that money that we need to keep King City going. We repair King City, we fix everything up. We make King City what it's supposed to be, and we bypass what appears to be a very conflicted and very expensive trying to rim ram this thing that has been unpopular from the get-go. I, I just want that option to be on the, on the table.
Are you suggesting that we sell the road?
I don't know if it's possible. I'd like to explore, I've been told that there's maybe ways that we can ask another city if they want to have it, and we sell it to them.
Is there precedence anywhere where there would be a different city jurisdiction with just
It set precedence.
I don't know.
I, I'm not aware of any precedence for that, and again, it's a matter of city trying to control its own destiny as opposed to letting Sherwood Railroad us or, or Tigard coming in and putting in thousands more than, okay, so
If we've negotiated the sale, we could set the terms. We could say, you can, we can sell this to you with these terms, and you can't put more density in. What I'm saying to you, I'm not here to debate the whole thing right now, but what I'm saying is I feel the resolution is so restrictive to only potentially adopting a different alignment. I would like to have every option on the table. We have not had, King City residents have not had the option to start over and look at this with fresh eyes and all options on the table. And before people start rolling their eyes, you know, it's actually what I'm suggesting to you. It's a pretty good idea to think about because really, we could have the money upfront for all the things that King City keeps saying we need this shiny star over here because we need the money, the money, the money, the money. So you have your shiny star, but then you've ruined the community of Edgewater, you've, you've ruined TCCA. We got traffic already backed off on Fisher Road.
I'm going to go ahead and cut you off there.
I wanted, I wanted to clarify that maybe we need to expand this resolution language.
I think that that would be probably potentially a whole different resolution. Max, if you could just clarify a second, whereas it feels convoluted to me a little bit as far as the way that it's worded. Can we reduce that a little bit, just to make it more clear that our goal is to seek to evaluate amending the TSP for
And take Fisher Road out of that second.
A different, just like, how can we simplify that to meet the goal of we're just looking at our options to amend the TSP?
Yeah, I can make that more broad.
Can we brainstorm what that could be so we can approve with, with amendments or?
Be it could be, it could be something as simple as King City, city council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP from all options, or
Let's go ahead and do that. So amend the TSP to, to potentially, well, to let's see, city council, what did you say? City council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP. So look at all options.
To explore every option available, every option possible.
Every option available. Let's go ahead and do that.
And which where else are you on?
The second one, just the second one. So we would just change that, remove most of it, and say that whereas the King City City Council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP to explore every option.
Yeah. And I can clean that up a little bit, but I think that, that should cover it to make it more broad.
Okay.
Is something that could be done relatively quick, Max?
I think, let's, let's go ahead and just update this resolution, in my opinion, to what we want it to look like, and then approve with the amendments. That way we can keep it, keep it moving and not wait till next month.
Okay, so how about, King City City Council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP to explore all possible, all possible alternative options? And then
All possible alternative options.
That seems like that would be good.
Okay. Let's see, did we have
Question about paragraph one. It says, whereas on June 14, 2023, the city of King City adopted the transportation system plan through ordinance zero or oh, two oh two three dash oh one. What if the city council wants to reverse or take that out? I know we have to do a separate ordinance. How, how would we do that if we decide we want to?
That might be a better question for Missy, but you would still need to go through. So did, did you guys have a chance to read the memo that I sent?
Yeah, it was great. Thank you.
So the memo basically dictates all the, the fact that the TSP was passed and acknowledged by the DLCD, made it law. It's state law, it's part of the regional transportation plan. Look up the RTP on Metro's website, look at the Washington County's RTP, it, it's been established. And so to go through that whole process to eliminate it, would, you would need to somehow still comply with Oregon Transportation Plan and the RTP, which I, I don't see a way to do that necessarily, just because it's already been law. Like, if they'd ever passed it and it was never made law, and, and then it would have just died back in 2023. But the fact that it's already been passed and acknowledged means that it's the law already. Because if the city council wanted to pass an ordinance at the next meeting and say, the city council is going to eliminate the TSP, we're not going to do it. Then DLCD would just simply not acknowledge that as law, and they would say, well, that's not good enough. We're not going to acknowledge it, and then it would not change. Does, or did Metro have jurisdiction over our TSP? They have more authority over it.
Thank you, Max. Is there, I want to open it up to any other counselors who have questions on the, oh, yeah, Missy.
It is. It doesn't sound like it can be done, because it might be a, a big burden to do it. But all I was asking is, could it be done if the city council believed that the ordinance in 2023 was passed with not quite accurate information?
It sounds like DLCD wouldn't acknowledge if we just overturned it. I think doing the process of amending it is what ultimately is going to make changes.
Right, but what I'm trying to do is, I want to look, I want to know legally what are all our options.
Okay, so thank you, Counselor Braverman. The other thing that's sort of looming out there is, if the city council say repeal the TSP and what's good non-habits TSP, one of the conditions of Metro approving Kingston Terrace area being brought into was that the city would formally file the TSP. So that would make the city out of compliance with that condition, and Metro could sue the city.
But we could also raise the fact, pass without all factual information, so it's based on fraud. We have a long section of limitation on fraud here in Oregon. And I think that if we wanted to be creative and we really wanted to make a big sink, we could.
Ms. Counselor Tancel?
I think that the statement that you just made, Counselor Braverman, is an opinion and not necessarily a fact. It is a point of view about fraud and misinformation.
I'm going to go ahead and pull this conversation back to the resolution itself, and let's go ahead and edit it as we would like so that we can vote on it.
Does anyone have any other edits that they would like me to make?
I just had a question about whereas number three, where it says must support a TSP amendment with an adequate factual base, including, and then we list a bunch of traffic studies and different studies. So we do have past studies, and there have been questions about can we use those moving forward? Or what would be, and I'm assuming you and I have talked about it, but I think clarity on what studies are actually needed versus what we may or may not be able to use previously.
Max, I can think of, so the adequate factual base requirement is in gold two. And what is an adequate factual base depends? I think what we would want to do is ask whoever the city hires as its expectation expert whether they think that the data that was relied on, that was collected in 2018, 19, maybe 20 to adopt those initial TSPs is good, or if it's too fail. There are traffic, I don't know, standards, I guess, best practices as to how far back you can get for data. And they would, they would know that.
So the way that this whereas is written, it sounds like it says we have to have an adequate factual base, including all these things, which we have. So if it were determined by the transportation consultants that what we have is adequate, then we don't have to go out and get new ones? Okay, so this doesn't
Probably not likely. The other thing I would like to find is that when, when, say, a TSP amendment is adopted and that's challenged at Luba, one of the things for challenging it would be that the city relied on old data. It would have failed to be reliable, and it's possible that Luba would agree with that. You might just think about it on the data.
That makes sense, but as, as it's written, it doesn't necessarily pigeonhole us into getting new ones. It would just be whatever the consultant recommends.
Do we have to, can we take the word must out, or do we have to have the word must in there?
Yeah, we still must have an actual, an adequate factual base. It just depends on whether or not what we have currently would work for it, or if we have to go out and get new ones.
Do we want to add that in there?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine with the way that it is, because it's broad enough that it could be what we already have versus and Missy agrees, so I think, I think we're good with that.
I like the part you said, depends on the circumstances. Should we add that in there? Any paragraph three, in your opinion, or your legal opinion?
No, I think that Counselor Braverman, the, the language is okay because it doesn't say support a TSP amendment with an adequate factual base, including new or updated traffic modeling. It just says traffic modeling. It doesn't say new or updated of any of
Don't want to add depending on circumstances, okay.
In the, in the fourth whereas, though, I feel as though maybe we could add an if needed, because it says, city of King City will seek to hire consultants to perform the necessary studies. Could we add an if needed, just so that way it kind of lends itself to what we've been discussing? Form the necessary studies if needed.
Necessary means if needed. Doesn't it, isn't it redundant, the necessary?
Whereas if Because why in the number three it's determined that we can use what we already have, then we wouldn't need the necessary studies because we would already have them. So in my, adding the if needed is if we actually need new ones? Does that make sense or not?
Perform studies.
Perform the studies.
If needed.
Form the, okay, so cross off necessary and then say if needed. And associated, okay, so I'm good with that one. Anybody else have any?
If I may just interject.
Okay. Yeah, go for it, Max.
Oh, okay. So one thing that I've been thinking about that I, I do believe will be really important for avoiding the bankston easement is that the alternative analysis, when it was done during the development of the TSP, only looked at the collectors themselves, the four alternatives, basically on islands. And so I think what we could do is, and we'll put this in the RFP if you guys agree with me, is that the studies should be to look at the whole transportation system plan and see if there is an alternative further north to avoid the bankston easement that would sufficiently work with the other networks that are within the TSP to eliminate the Fisher Road extension outside of River Lane. Because, like I said, it was, it was just four streets going all the way across from 137th to Roy Rogers. But then we had this all network built out to accommodate those streets. And so I think it would be important to analyze if the network is still going to be feasible and work well if the collector has moved further north with, with the TSP as it is right now. If we're just trying to erase that one little bit that is crossing the bankston easement. Does that make sense to that?
Yeah, I think, I think that's exactly what we're all proposing, really.
Yeah, but Max, last meeting, I thought it was something that you said that was very worthy of adding in. You mentioned in the last meeting in September that we could avoid the bankston, that you thought that that would be relatively, you said, easy to do. And I'm wondering if we could just agree as a city council that we want to just do that.
No, I, I definitely, that, that's the pride, that's what I'm saying, is that to avoid the bank
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If we move it further north, but we keep the network as it is in Kingston Terrace, then we can further support moving the collector north because they deemed these other alternatives to not be as sufficient because they were, they were looked at on an island in the previous analysis, the alternatives analysis. So if we say, okay, well, we're going to move it north So if we say, okay, well, we're going to move it north and this alternative analysis, you know, whatever it was, option two or what have you, with the network that's already put in place should be sufficient or, you know, does the traffic engineer find it sufficient as is with just eliminating that connection over the bankston easement?
I would prefer that we just eliminate.
Evaluating.
Not make it contingent on making a road north when we don't know what all the other alternatives are at this point. We try to stay open to all, all alternatives. We don't want to back ourselves into another worst corner that we can't get out of.
I think we want to see all the alternatives. I would also like, um, it to be noted that in the alternative analysis studies that we also consider collector being changed back to neighborhood, right? That's also one of the goals is to not actually have a collector.
And, and not to extend Fisher Road.
So I, I think being able to provide all of these alternative options that we can look at and then we can, um, you know, analyze each of them according to the goals that we have.
Resolution was amended so many times.
Yeah.
Half a dozen different.
Uh, councillor Olson, you have something to add, I believe.
I certainly do.
Cutting your mic so things can hear you. Push both, both buttons.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, I, I think this resolution is important and I do not want to delay its passage tonight. Uh, but I did have a couple, uh, questions. I think part of it you might have answered is, I, I had a question on what did we want the RFP to say? And I think you kind of elaborated on it in your last comments. But also, are they referred to as the resolves down below or just paragraph number two? Paragraph number two and three kind of combine two separate things and then they kind of repeat it briefly in number three. And it just seems to me to be, uh, easier to understand if they were separated out that, uh, uh, number two could be, um, authorizing the staff to prepare and advertise the RFP to do what you said earlier. And then, uh, number three could authorize the city staff to receive, uh, seek grant applications.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that. They seem redundant, like they're redundantly kind of saying the same thing. So if we could separate them out, um, I agree with that amendment. Keep.
Yes.
Can I propose that number two, number two would say the city of King City council hereby authorized to research and apply for funding assistance grants through various grant programs. Number three remains as it is.
Okay.
Uh, does that capture what?
But then from number three, we could just remove the and to submit grant applications. Wouldn't that be satisfied in number two?
So delete that, remove that.
So you want to leave the second one, authorizing the research. Okay. So delete the follow procedures in ORS 279. Okay.
There, number three, the strike, you would period it after the RFP.
Um, my other question is related to the, um, the funding. Um, with the memo, it looks like the, the estimated cost was 35,000 to 100,000. Um, since this is council's probably number one goal at the moment, is that something that can be absorbed in the budget? We cannot find grants in the net, like this is, as councillor Olson said, this is like kind of time of the essence, time is of the essence with this right now. Um, can we leave that part open to say we will look for grants, but we're going to move forward in the meantime?
Well, I'm a little bit confused because right now what's on the table is a resolution that's authorizing.
Hold on, can we please answer the question that I had first before we move on?
I think it's out of order, right?
Councillor Braverman, I had a question. Can we, can we staff answer that?
That might be a better question for Mira and/or Katie, um, just because I'm not sure how. It might be like a supplementary budget sort of item that's pulled from some other funds, but I, any, any kind of budgeting stuff in the books is a little bit outside my wheelhouse.
That's fine. I think, is it just something though that we can leave open in number two? Um, hereby authorized to research and apply for funding assistance grants through various programs, not limited to dot, dot, dot. I don't know. How, how else might, might we add to that to?
I don't think that the resolution prevents the city from self-funding.
Okay.
I think the resolution provides the authority that the city staff will need to, to, a pass to and grant applications. The, the city has authorized the city staff to.
Okay. So we could.
And still proceed.
Okay. Councillor Tysoe?
Yeah. Um, when we, we're talking at the last meeting and then also to, and Mayor Kozmerski and I were at the Metro Mixer, that dollar range was considerably higher than the one that you have put in this staff report. So I'm wondering, um, where that different basis came from. Um, you know, I mean, I would be delighted if it's between 35 and 100,000 because the numbers that were spoken at the last council meeting and also at the Metro Mixer amongst Metro staff, um, more money. So where did the 35 to 100 come from?
The 35 was based off of a conversation that I had with a traffic engineer when we were talking about just eliminating the bankston easement. But I don't think that they truly understood the amount of work that I will, that the city is requesting to do. Um, councillor Tysoe, do you mind sharing what Metro ballparked for you?
More in the $150,000 range, as I recall.
I know, I, I wasn't in that conversation. I'm not sure. Sorry.
It also depends on.
Partly because there's all of these hoops we have to jump through.
We would know with RFP, right? The consultants would come back and say, this is what we think it would cost. So at that point, we would be able to kind of move forward and analyze, yeah, what we. Okay. So it sounds like we don't need to add that to the resolution, which is great. Councillor Olson, was there something else that you wanted to add or had questions about?
No, I think everything's been addressed.
Thanks. Councillor President, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Well, it seems like some of the prior studies, now from what investigation I've done, some people have applied that some of, some of it was done during the pandemic. And so not only is it outdated on traffic, but it's really skewed because not, not many people were driving during the pandemic. So I'm just wondering, would our RFP include somebody to just go back and verify the data? I know we talked about it, whether it was sale or not, but I don't think it's a matter of opinion. I disagree mightily with my fellow council member. I think there are some factual inaccuracies and how do we get to the bottom of those and make sure that everything that we're relying on for the TSD or whatever we're going to do is actually factually accurate and up to date for 2025, 2026.
Yeah, I mean, the, the scope of the RFP is again what we're talking about right now. And I, and perhaps the, the city attorney can clarify, but final RFP before we submit it can maybe like a work session with the council when it's, when Ronnie and I have a draft. Currently, we have reached out to LOC to hopefully provide some support. Um, when the TSP was originally written, when the RFP was put out, the RFP was put out as funded and support from Metro. So the city received a TGM grant and then as part of that grant, Metro provided the city with support to write the T, the RFP for the TSP. And so we don't have that support right now. And we're trying to find help to get it going because it's a little bit of a complicated document. But that could maybe be a conversation once Ronnie and I figure out some, some ideas and hopefully get some help from an outside agency to have them come in and have a work session with the council so we could all hash it out together. I think that might be a good step sometime in November prior to the next city council meeting.
Yeah, I will support that. Um, I guess I just want to say that, uh, we don't want to move slowly on this. That we want to proceed with the RFP as possible. I understand that we are short-staffed. Once we get the RFP out, then it takes, you know, a month after that for the, and then interview or judging the bids. I just don't want to see it get pushed out too far. Thanks.
So tonight, we're expecting to pass this resolution.
Yeah, I, I think at this point I would, do you have a question? I would like to entertain a motion on approving with amendments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution with the agents documented.
What they are.
We have to write them all out. I don't, I, I tried my best.
I have them all here. I will, uh, I will state them first and then Sandy, if you would like to.
For, for the record, can you state, I move to approve?
Yes, I've got it.
I'm going to go ahead and list out the amendments that we spoke about and then we can, um, in the second whereas, it will say, whereas the King City city council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP to explore all possible alternative options. Strike the rest. Um, whereas number four, we are going to strike the word necessary. So to perform the studies if needed, an associated amendment. So we're just adding the if needed, striking necessary. And then, um, down under the city resolves, number two, we are going to edit that to say the city of King City staff is hereby authorized to research and apply for funding assistance grants through various grant programs, including but not limited to the ODOT Transportation Growth Management Program. So we are striking to follow the procedures in ORS 279 to prepare and advertise an RFP. And then number three, we are putting a period after the RFP and striking and to submit grant applications. Those are the amendments that I have. So, um, councillor Cunningham, if you would like to make your motion.
Resolution R 2025-19, a resolution to dedicate, amend the TSP conditions stated previously by the mayor.
I hear a second.
I second that move.
Okay, we will take a roll call vote. Councillor Gerhart?
Yes.
Councillor Cunningham?
Yes.
Councillor Tysoe?
Yes.
Councillor President Braverman?
Yes.
Councillor Olson? Councillor Ardeedy?
Yes.
And Mayor Kozmerski, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Good job, everybody. Have we got sidewalk updates, Max? If you want to let us know what you've been working on?
Was it the staff, staff update?
Um, it's.
Sidewalk update.
Yeah, sorry, sidewalk.
The, the chief actually did some good research in this. He may want to chime in. I reached out to the city engineer to get some cost estimates and he said that basically if the, for, because the city wouldn't want to come in and repair composite crumbling sidewalk in KCCA with another sidewalk that's going to be composite and crumbling. And so it would be a concrete sidewalk and he ranged about $50 per square foot, including cubic square foot. And then for corners with ramps, it'd be about $2,500. So if it was the corner of a sidewalk, it'd be about $2,500 and that's per panel. And so, um, that was about the extent of what I was looking into, other than what I had found before. Whereas most other cities have programs for uh, additional support for community members to fix their sidewalks. However, that support is generally contingent upon damage to the sidewalk being caused by street trees. With, with the idea being that the street trees are owned by the city. So in essence, it's the city causing the damage to the sidewalk. Um, we couldn't necessarily find any examples of other cities that just have general sidewalk programs. I, and again, I don't know the legality of the, the emphasis of need is in the KCCA neighborhood because that sidewalk's not concrete. And that is where our 55 and older folks are living. And that's just kind of where this, this problem is occurring the most. And perhaps Missy can speak to this, but I, I, I'm not sure if the city has the ability to dedicate resources to one part of the city uh, and not dedicate resources to the other part of the city. Now, there are a lot of sidewalks that are damaged in Edgewater and Castle Oaks and Bedford and those areas that are caused by street trees. Um, but to this point, when residents come into city hall and are requesting street tree permits, they have to go through, the street tree permits to remove the street tree, to repair the sidewalk and then replant the street tree that's causing the damage. The city is very hands-off and it's, it's an unfortunate way that it's set up in the fact that they have to pay for removing the tree and repairing their own sidewalk and go to the planning commission to request removal of the tree. So to sum that up, the system could definitely use some refinement, to say the least. Um, but I haven't found good examples of how exactly to do that. And I do think that it would be pretty cost prohibitive. Um, just based off of the figures that the city engineer provided me. It, it, it could be potentially included in some sort of street improvement program later on. But I do believe that that would also require code amendments and potentially charter amendments because the city code and the city, I'm not sure about the city charter, but the city code does explicitly stay, state that the sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. So it's, it's, it's complicated to say the least.
Just so you know, I did a bunch of research on this already for Edgewater, both Wilsonville, City of Hillsborough, even Troutdale has a program. It's called Sidewalk Grant. Um, they have amended their charter for situations where the community trees have caused the sidewalk. Uh, Safe Sidewalk is a program. That's the name of the vendor. If, if it's over, if it's two inches or lower, sidewalk, you know, is not higher than a two inch variable. What they do is they, they cut, they cut some kind of into it and they cut it at an angle and they're able to repair it without having to replace it, which is a lot cheaper. And safe sidewalks work with all the cities and municipalities, including Kaiser, all the police departments. So, um, and, and so they have some best practices. So it would be up to our city attorneys and our city council. We would want to look into that. I do agree, we would have to amend our current charter, which is why we have a charter committee and hopefully we can give them some guidance on this. Um, but I think that if we are going to ask homeowners to pitch in, there's a way that homeowners can pitch in and the city can also pitch in. And we can also do some kind of grants for the people who can't pay.
Uh, so I think Steve has some numbers, but I did want to speak to, I think, Max's, uh, question. I, the city could structure a sidewalk repair program in a way that was objective. Uh, so for example, maybe, um, street trees that are causing damage are priority number one. Maybe areas that don't have concrete sidewalks would be priority number two. And in that way, uh, the focus isn't on a, a particular neighborhood, although the result might be that it's a particular neighborhood. Um, and set those priorities that way. The code would need to be amended. I would just be in those amendments, I would be cautious to amend the code in such a way that it doesn't place risk from injuries from sidewalks onto the city. So we would want to think about that.
And there would also be budgetary.
Yeah, that's the thing that we looked at. I was in four different cities, Amity 12th and Oregon City. And like Amity's a 50/50 program up to $2,000 that they would be able to, uh, fund. And so I asked, okay, how much is that fund? And it's $10,000. So basically, fine. You know, sidewalks that they can help repair. Um, the program opens up once a year. It's first come, first served. And that's how that's treated with them. Twolton does something a little bit different. This answers the question that Max had was they actually attach a fee to their utility bills a month. So it's water, sewer. There's a certain percentage that goes to a street fund that they identify sidewalks uh, every year that needs to be replaced or repaired. And so they'll go and they'll work on a section. I was told today that they are looking into changing that to where there may be something where they change it like other cities um, require the sidewalk to be damaged by a street tree. And if it's not done by a street tree, then they're not going to help, you know, pay for it. Um, and that's Oregon cities that way. They have set budget. I wouldn't be able to get the number of what they. They have set budget, I wouldn't be able to get the number of what they have. And then speaking with Woodburn, you know, the city pays up to 50% of the lowest. They have a fixed budget and it's first come, first served. And they, to your point, I think I talked to you about, is they specifically list, it's in the website as well, is lack of sufficient fund does not absolve the property owner of responsibility nor create any liability for the city for beating on city sidewalk. So there's definitely got to be some language and some charter change. And if we're going to look into that. And also, I believe it was Amity, they had, or no, it was Woodburn, because they have a certain amount of money. They're taking an item out of their street funds. And specifically, it's for sidewalks. And about something.
So you said Amity had $10,000 a year. That's every year?
Um, they just started. It's a fairly new program. Yeah, that's what they got.
So it'd be five people every year. So maybe we could do something like that, five people a year. And then, uh, something like Counsel Brayburn was talking about, where I think they actually grind down the high spots of the sidewalks.
Well, they cut it at an angle. They don't grind it down. They cut it at an angle and they repair it.
Yeah, I've, I've seen them, I've seen them grinding down. My brother has exactly the same thing and my little sister tripped over it. And so he had to pay for it to be ground down. Anyway, a possibility like that, or a combination of those solutions. If we could put a task force or something together to look at all that, I think we could get it done a lot faster.
I have a question about the process.
I'm sorry, as we have on for the HOAs, because Edgewater is already starting this process again. We've identified 100 sidewalks in Edgewater right now, or in the process of getting the letters out to those homeowners. So I've reached out to other HOAs and I think it'd be good to form a committee. First of all, I, I disagree in part with Counselor Gerhart. We as a city, I still have a duty to our homeowners to protect them from falling. We've already had people come in here during open forum and show pictures, gruesome pictures of people falling on sidewalks and getting terribly injured. So the first, I think the committee we formed is identify those most hazardous trip hazards, regardless of who's at fault or who's going to pay for it. I think we need to have them marked so that at least people can see them before they fall on them. That would be my first recommendation. And that's what we've done in Edgewater. We've already gone out and marked all 100 of our trip hazards with a white and yellow line. Um, yes, that doesn't completely solve the problem, but at least if you're out walking, hopefully you see that line and know that it's a hazard before you fall on it.
Counsel Cunningham, you had a question as well?
I have a question about the process. Do they come in and have to pay for a permit to replace their sidewalk? Is that correct? Are, are they required to hire a licensed and bonded contractor?
Yes.
Oh, because they're not.
That's up to.
That's not in our code.
It's technical, it's organ business.
I just want to say, there's a man that's doing a lot of contract work in our, in our neighborhood. And I checked on him a few weeks ago and he is not licensed and bonded.
It's actually a misdemeanor.
Okay, but then I'm done.
$5,000 fine, I think.
I just wanted to understand the process. Thank you.
Steve and I know we've been through this.
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Counselor Iverman, you had an interesting.
Well, this is for safety. And so I just want to say, my, the thing I would want to think through and ask the council to think through is the code, once there's a determination that a sidewalk is dangerous, the code requires notice to the owner that triggers that responsibility for the owner to pay. What I'm a little bit concerned about is that then, once the city knows about it and if the city doesn't go ahead and fix it, that the city may be taking on some liability.
We, we talked to our insurance company before we did that. And I'll just say, the advice that we got from our Edgewater insurance was we were concerned for the same reason with our council. Um, but our insurance company told us that if we didn't mark it, then we were more liable. So you got to mark it. And all right, the first step.
We might be the consultant of CIS, our city's insurance company, right?
Yeah, I think so. And, and do some more damage before, before.
I have a question for Counsel Brayburn, real quick. The, the damage or raised areas on the trees in Edgewater, or on sidewalks in Edgewater, are they caused by trees mainly? Or is that's not an issue really in King City, I don't think?
Fortunately though, I mean, our HOA has, it's been put on to each resident. I, and we've gotten a lot of pushback, but we have made the resident say. Um, I just wanted to tell Chief, Chief, you should really check with the City of Tigard and the City of Sherwood. What I understand there, they've done successfully is, after we figure out all these other steps that Missy was talking about, what they do, my understanding is, is they make the homeowner pay for it and with a licensed bonded repair. And then they give them a reimbursement, almost like a reward for like 50%. They pay them back if it was tree related. And the reason is to give them the incentive to take care of it right away and then to get an inspection out to make sure it was done properly.
So at this point, can we just direct the city staff to check in with CIS? Give us some possible next steps at our next meeting? Sounds like there's still kind of a lot of avenues that we can go down, but we definitely don't want to put risk on the city. So we want to be careful with what we're doing.
I'm sorry, I need a suggestion that we form some, some citizen committees to help us identify, because it's a lot of work to get those identified.
I think before we do a task force, I agree with you that that is a good next step. But I think before we go through the process of what is the task force going to do, we need to figure out what the city can do without adding a re.
Well, my concern is that we're, we've got a lot of risk out there right now. And if you want to talk about time of the essence, now that it's getting rainy and dark, more people are going to be outside falling. So I don't, I don't want to waste time. I'm not.
I think we are, but I think we just need to do something. Marking them would be a good thing.
Your, your goal was to identify sidewalks that need repair and mark them. And then our attorney said that that could, that would trigger the city to send a notice to the homeowner, which then could put risk on the city if it wasn't fixed. Did I hear that correctly?
That's right. There's the process. And ultimately, if the homeowner doesn't fix it, the city is, has the discretion to repair it. And that is the gray area that I'm concerned about, where you have a notice that comes out, homeowner who can't afford it legitimately, and the city doesn't exercise its discretion to do this repair and then takes on liability that it did not underwrite that.
We need to be a little more clear on the role of the city in this, I think, before we form a task force.
Well, we have to decide.
Counselor Tysoe, did you have something you want to?
Yeah, Missy, if the, um, if the city goes ahead and repairs because the homeowner can't or won't, whichever of the situation, is it possible to put a lien on the property so then the city can be reimbursed when the property changes?
Put the code rest in path. First, you mark it, you get, you provide a notice to the owner. If the property owner doesn't, the city can go repair it and let the property. A tool in the toolbox. It was, I think I would advise some conversation about, about whether the city wants to take on the role of being the lien or of a bunch of people.
Well, because with the number of sidewalks potentially that need repair, we would be, it's a budgetary concern on if we send all these letters out and there's refusal to take care of it, and then the city has to take care of them all. And then we hope that we get reimbursed at some point.
It's a million dollar bill.
I, I just think there's a lot of steps we need to consider. Um.
I have a question.
Do we need to take a vote to direct cities, or just you guys know what our goals are? Okay.
Just one last question. If we identify, let's say, 123 South Main Street is, has got a sidewalk. We haven't marked it yet, but we've just identified it. Are you saying that imposes liability on the city?
The language is very broad and it's just when the city determines that a sidewalk needs repair, requires repair.
But what if it's a committee, it's an independent.
Volunteer committee in a, in a.
That's probably a determinant.
That would, that would be something then, that the council wouldn't be creating a task force because then it's the city.
Right. But what I'm suggesting, if I could talk on our opportunity, is that if we get a committee together of citizens from all over King City to just start identifying those addresses that have sidewalk issues, then at least when we go down this path, we will know how many we're talking about and what the scope is before we put the horse before the cart, is what I'm suggesting.
So a couple things with that is, it's having a citizen committee make a determination that really is utterless to somebody who has engineering experience. I mean, there are, there are sideboards, I guess, I would say, to how to determine when a sidewalk is so bad that it, you know, needs to repair, right? And then the other thing is if the council creates this committee, then that is the city. That is a, they're acting as, as a council. Not only, there.
Guys, if we can't. I think just not at this point. I think we just need further information. And maybe, maybe next month, we can determine that we can move forward with that.
Hiring a, a trans. We're talking.
Who can, who can do that?
Yeah, we're talking about.
Okay.
Some programs to help us, not just sidewalks, but also the roads.
Well, I would suggest sidewalks, at least get a bid from them because they're very reasonable. Their repairs are affordable for our homeowners.
Let's add this to the agenda for next month to follow up on what more we've learned. Um, let's go ahead and move on to new business. Um, first item, our new business is financials department memo. And it looks like essentially we don't have financials this month due to, um, Katie and Mira being at the, um, the training.
They are online.
Oh.
Love to talk to you.
Great, sounds good. Who is online?
I have Katie and.
Katie, Mira, whoever would like to join us for the financial memo?
Please try to unmute.
In the meantime, I have a question for Brian.
Yeah.
What's the score?
It's not good. It's 12 and 2. 12 and 4 now.
No way.
That's to build the mood.
Yeah. It shouldn't have.
All right, Katie. Mira.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Hi.
Mira, okay, Mira. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. So, okay, so for the, uh, for the September financials, yes, because we temporary staff shortage. And also, we, I, we have some employee staff scheduled vacation. And also, me and Katie went to the Casell training in Salt Lake City. So just last week, we come back last week. So we just don't think it's a good idea to rush into the financial report with the limited time. So, uh, next month, we will have the September and October financials. Also, with the audit.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Also with.
Like the cell training?
I'm sorry.
Have you guys learned good things with the Casell training to help us out?
Yes, yes, really good conference, yes. And really surprised or glad to know there's other company using Casell software for over 20 years. And which we are just starting using Casell less, a little bit less than five years.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, keep going with your, with your memo. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so yeah, the memo just, also, we are at the final stage with the 23, 24 audit. So hopefully, we have the final audit at the end of this month, hopefully. So.
Great, thank you very much, Mira.
Anything you want to add, Katie?
Katie's having some issues with her.
She definitely has something else.
Her mic.
Okay. I have question and we have financials next meeting.
She does, um, she did mention, she texted here. She said, uh, we do, they do have a list of takeaways from the conference that they will be implementing.
Oh, good, great.
All is good.
Thank you, Katie.
Hey, Mayor, I have four quick questions.
Yes.
Real, real fast, I wanted to verify that King City has $50,000 in unspent road funds that can be spent on anything. Is that correct?
Unspent road fund?
Yeah, I missed last meeting and I apologize for that. So I got that secondhand.
I, I think.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I can, I can chime in, um, Counselor, Counselor Olson, we, we did have about $100,000 left over in our initial street improvement program that.
Street improvements.
Since been allocated to 129th and King Richard to almost about the $400,000 total.
Okay, so it's been spent or allocated. Um, how much do we have in reserve funds? And are there any other flexible funds and using those would that trigger requiring a public budget hearing?
Better hearing. Are you talking about the fund for street improvement project?
No, it's my understanding that King City has reserve funds. Is that correct?
Uh, so, so this, if you're talking about the street fund, we have the contingency in street fund to cover the unexpected expenses.
Okay, so Katie said, um, the, the hearing is only required for 10% budget changes. And yes, we do have a reserve.
How much is in them?
Oh, you mean the contingency in street fund?
Um, I think it's in, in our reserves. How much do we have, does, does King City have?
Okay, so the reserve fund, you, you need, we need to clarify the reserve fund. The reserve means we have in each individual fund. So if we are talking about a street fund, so we are talking about a contingency in street fund. So I will, I, I recall about 200,000 contingency in the street fund.
Just street. I'm getting clarification from Katie here in a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're texting with Katie because her volume isn't working. So Ronnie is texting with Katie. So hold on. It's almost like we're having two conversations at once. Thank you.
Yeah, check on the financial summary last month.
I know what the, what amount is in their reserves.
Probably.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, so. Yeah, sure, about that, 200,000.
Sorry, uh, they want to know how much is in the.
The contingency in street fund? Katie, you find it? You sure 200, something else?
Speaker? He does that with fans. We have, we have a campaign expenditures of 600,000 in the budget. I think that's all been spoken for. That's probably something we need to review with Max. I think you're trying to say something, but I can't hear you.
I, I muted Mira. So go ahead and read.
Specifically, the contingency and reserves are sitting in the general fund, and it's a few million dollars. I think Mira is trying to speak, I want to say something conflicting with what she has.
Yeah, I think we should look at the one in street fund, not the general fund, because they are talking about a street improvement expenditure.
I, I think my.
Let's move on from that question, or I think Randy is just asking now, just generally, what's in the reserve, am I right, Randy?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Katie, I think that's answered.
Thank you, Mira.
Maybe that's something we can put in the report for, for next month, too, just to say, and Katie, can you hear that?
It's in the report that you get, we can just make sure we point it out.
Yeah.
Be looking at it next month.
Perfect, that would be great.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the reserve funds are funds set aside, they aren't budgeted and they aren't obligated.
Budgeted, yep, correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Counselor Olson?
No, that was it, thank you.
Any further questions?
Okay, thank you, Mira and Katie.
Thank you.
Next up, we have direction to interim city manager regarding timing for identifying outside contractor, city HR services, quite a mouthful. So, where did it stem from? Um, I went to the League of Oregon Cities Leadership Conference and Ronnie was there as well, and there was a bunch of great workshops we went to, a lot of good conversations came out of it, specifically that we don't really have like governance policies, we don't have clearly defined council rules, um, fully working employee handbook, like there's just a lot of things we need to shore up, and, um, it would be a good time to discuss appointing interim city manager to look at, um, a contractor for city HR services.
We have Chief Apple do that?
We could have Chief Apple do that as well, whichever hat it's like to wear while doing it. Um, so, so that was the intent for adding this to the agenda, open to questions, discussion.
So, when I talked to Adam Collier, when I was helping, when I had to stand in for the mayor to coordinate the union contract, Adam Collier had made a recommendation to an HR service that he recommended highly that we could use as a third party and they would only charge if necessary, and he thought it would be a good idea to have an outside HR person all the time. Um, he said that in his travels, and I'm just paraphrasing, and I gave Keith the information so he could verify it directly with Adam, because I didn't really want to be in the middle of it. But my understanding in my conversation with Adam Collier, and I'm just reminding everyone that he was hired by the city to be our labor attorney for the city of King City, his recommendation was this third-party HR service, and he said, it's always good to have an outside person because as you can see in turmoil going on in other cities when they have their own HR provider, a lot of times it's perceived as being biased and it can cause a lot of internal conflict. Um, it's always nice to have an outside neutral party, and so I think that's a great idea that we give direction to our interim city manager to find the right HR service.
Do you remember who he recommended?
Um, Keith, I gave it to you, I don't remember.
It's HR Answers, I've talked to them already.
It's our answer?
Yeah, they're based here, it's a national company, but it's, there is, they are based here. So, you know, I guess we have to define, you know, all of what we want to have looked at, because like Lexi pole, we have all these procedures for the law enforcement side, it's a great company that deals with, you know, they help you push on. Yeah. Side of the house for municipal side, it's more than half the price of what, what I paid for the law enforcement side, and they, they base their policies based on federal and best practices, federal law best practices. And so they, you know, they put out updates, they do training, self-paced on it. Answers is another one that, uh, their, their fees are based a little, they're more hourly, where Lexi pole is a subscription service where I pay an upfront fee, say 11,000, and then you have a $2,700 a year charge, where if you brought in HR answers, they charge you per hour. They also, they have a template as well, I'd have to look at both of them to see if they're, you know, touching the same stuff. And so, there are the companies that are out there, you know, again, HR answers would be nice because you can bring in a body to come in and teach class, you know, stuff for and do training for how today for the city. So, there's, and there's a possibility of maybe blending both, doing a hybrid type, type of thing where, you know, you have a policy manual and then you have somebody that you've been hired to come in and actually teach classes and not be something where we're, you know, getting bored staring at the computer screen as actual live humans. And it's the same way with, I think, did we talk about the charter a little bit or, you know, something like that? So, there's like, is that Jurassic, Ronnie, we were talking about them at a point, you know, and
Yes.
review some things and stuff, so there's a possibility, and we just have to, need help with barely defining it to where, okay, here's what we need as far as, yeah, employee handbook, yes, policy procedures, yes.
I think the League of Oregon Cities would have some resources.
Well, the thing is, is that we want. I mean, I think they do have a resource, but, um, somebody to actually like, put it together, right?
What they're, what they're going to do is they're going to give us the same list that we've pretty much already talked, um, which is great, but now we just need to kind of go to the next step with directing chief to.
Are those kind of the only place? You had mentioned, did you mention a third that you had spoken to?
Yeah, I've powered UMS, which is, they're, they're also part of the accreditation that we're going to attempt to do. Um, they, basically, it's a, it's a management, management system where they're keeping track of everything for you. And so, um, haven't gotten to be as deep a look into them as the others that we've actually, Ryan and I worked on for quite some time. And the beauty of like Lexi pole is that you pay that larger fee, they kind of do all the heavy lifting for you, you obviously go through and you have to look at some edits and stuff that's tailored for the city, but, you know, there's something that it can be done a little bit quicker because to go sit down and go through policy by policy and make sure everything is done.
Do any of those companies provide also like personnel HR services?
So, I'd have to look at like HR answers to see if they have somebody that would be, and I'm assuming you're talking about somebody that comes on site.
No, it sounds like if they charge hourly, maybe it's just as is, as needed, like if there was, um.
Like an investigation you want to do or something like, you know.
Yeah, because right now, like where do complaints go? Because I know previously, is it you still, like, is it inter, is it?
Yeah, it would be, ultimately, be the media.
Okay.
And this Lexi pole, I mean, you said they do federal law, but we have to make sure we have Oregon law covered, we have to make sure we have local law covered, do they cover Oregon law for non-police?
Yeah, that, so there's the hole in, in the Lexi pole part of it, is that they don't have, you know, the, the local, you know, legislation that's been active that deals with like Oregon or, you know, something along that line. And so that's where we would look at, you know, another company that comes in and fills, either fills the gap
Yeah.
or we just go with them all together, but we, I was talking with Miss earlier, where, you know, most of.
Oregon has a lot of, and just the statute limitation.
Well, I would, yeah, I would like to hear, what is your recommendation? Is he, I'm like.
Uh, I do think you need, uh, an HR firm who does, I was just thinking about, you know, what, what happens if someone says, I need to take family leave? Well, there's federal family leave, if then there's some separate, separate tracks, Oregon's family leave. I don't know right now how, is it an outlook or?
Right, right.
Well, that's, that's a huge need, and, I mean, I'm thinking of the more benign, I guess, needs, you know, ranging from tracking leaves to who, who to file a complaint with. And then I think it's important to have an employee.
Well, we also talked about the respectful workplace, the reason why Adam and I had this conversation as well is because, you know, we were talking about respectful workplace, and this council, well, the predecessor council, we wanted to make sure there was an outside person, not just the city manager, whoever that's going to ultimately be, in case the complaint is about the city manager. And Adam Collier and I went around and around on this, um, and he said that he recommended this HR, it doesn't have to be this company, but he let, wanted somebody local and somebody who knew both Oregon and federal law that could be a resource, and we don't have to pay them monthly, we only pay them for what we scope them to do.
An, yeah, like an as needed.
As needed.
Does that kind of narrow the scope, I suppose, on next steps?
Yeah, it just, it opens up the conversation to work, especially with a local company, whether we need them or hit them to here, or we can sit there and ask all those questions.
Have you contacted, sorry.
Go ahead.
Have you contacted LOC to get a list of HR firms?
That's the next, and I have that written down.
Because they're going to be the ones that will be able, that will know all the, all the aspects of Oregon law plus the federal law, and, um, and I know that there are companies who have HR counselors that are not part of a company, but you go to, to them if you want to, you want to say something about your working conditions without fear of retribution, and I think that that is hugely important, that everybody who works for the city should feel safe in their position, and also, you know, it's just hugely important.
If, uh, King City is going to hire a contractor, is it required to go through the RFP process?
I can see, not, can't answer that yet, but I'll have an answer. I'll go back and look at what, the new, what is newly adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Um, okay, we weren't really voting on anything with that item, just giving directions, and so, Chief City Manager, do you have any further questions for us on, on moving forward?
I do.
All right, next, I believe you'll probably be up next, discuss and consider the office space at 15405 Southwest 116, the King Canyon's building, the, the office space that we've been renting, April?
Yes, and so the, the contract was included in the packet, and so, we, talking, we're looking at, you know, we're paying $1,150 a month for basically that space right now. And not something that we do finish outfitting the office with security, the cameras, putting in our, you know, our internet that we have to put in there, and everything, it's initial bid from our internal IT is $20,000. And we don't even have furniture in there yet. And so, we see that as something that we probably should make out and, and tell the leasing company that, hey, go ahead and advertise, because what they've told us, and I was speaking with Mira, was they'd advertise the office space again, and as soon as somebody stepped up and said, yeah, we want that space, that we, our lease is basically going to from there. And so that's the opinion and of everybody here in the city halls that you just let it come.
How many months have we rented it without anybody in there? And I, I remember being like the only person who thought it was a ridiculous idea, nobody.
Well, it sounds like, let's go ahead and, Zimmy, do you like to make a motion to let go of our office space?
I would make a motion.
Did we, there we go, on, on one of the pages, um, for discuss and consider office space, if anybody would like to read the resolution.
All right, can I make a motion on item eight C, on the office space to officially give notice that we'd like to vacate once.
I apologize, could you please just read the motion, it's there. Oh, I'm supposed to read this? I, I moved to direct city, yeah.
Okay, I move to direct the interim city manager to terminate the office space at 15405 Southwest 116th Avenue.
Thank you, 200 seconds.
A second.
Discussion, did you have further?
I do, I.
Counselor Tyso?
One quick question, um, and I think it's appropriate to cancel because $20,000 setup fee, this is a pretty large chunk of money. So, and they're going to advertise as soon as we say, let's do this. How many months of payout are we going to have to pay in the future? Is it until they can lease it? Or, or does it cut off? I mean, because our lease is left for three years.
I think it's three years.
Yeah, so we could be potentially in.
I doubt it's going to go that long, but.
But, I mean, yeah, the potential would be $36,000 or so, but probably not, yeah.
Any further questions? Counselor Didi?
Yes.
Okay, well, we haven't got to the vote yet, so, um.
Are we voting or are we just asking me a question? I'm looking at the lease.
I was just seeing if you, seeing if you had any questions, so let's go ahead and go to roll call vote, Counselor Didi.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counsel President Braverman.
Yes.
Counselor Tyso.
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yes.
Counselor Gerhart.
Yes.
Mayor Kuzmerzki, yes, motion passes, 7-0. Um, next item on our agenda, possible guidelines and or outside assistance for Charter Review Committee, and we've discussed providing some more guidance to the Charter Review Committee and, um, potentially even hiring Jurassic or similar company, um, so we're going to open up that discussion. I have some thoughts, but I'm going to let others go first, if you would raise your hand, I will recognize you, Counselor Braverman.
I think it's, it's been a contention of mine that it is the city council's duty to give the Charter Committee some guidelines. Um, I think this is a great opportunity to really highlight those areas that our current city council would like to see them work on. And I love the idea of Jurassic, because they already came in and did a presentation, and as part of their presentation to us, they identified many inconsistencies already between our charter and municipal code, and they seemed very knowledgeable on how to help us maybe in, give us some guidelines on how to get that resolved.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Tyso?
If there isn't any further discussion, I would make a motion that we explore hiring Jurassic Par- Jurassic Parliament to.
I suppose, but I'm not the only one.
Wouldn't it be fun, uh, Jurassic Parliament to, um, gi- give us, um, help to steer our Charter Review Committee into, um, do you actually have?
I do not, but I would like for you to write it down.
I was going to write it as you said.
Oh. Well, you're doing that, I have additional comments. So, I was, uh, part of that, uh, committee, and, um, there's, how many people are on that committee now, Ronnie? Seven? And, and I found them to be some really, really, really hardworking people, and I heard talk in the past of disbanding them morally against doing that. We would end up, uh, demoralizing them, and, and they're, they're our neighbors and passing we need to do. If anything, we need to lift them up and empower them, give them the tools that we think we need, in that respect, I, I agree with, with, uh, Counselor Braverman, uh, you know, just give them a little bit of guidance. Um, I think now they have an attorney attending the meetings, is that correct?
That's gotta be.
Correct.
Up to you guys.
So, I, I do, let me finish my comments uninterrupted, I do believe that it's very, very important that we have an attorney there, because that's, that would be like. that would be like the right, their right hand, and, and they could probably work very closely with Missy, and, and that would lend them, um, I think, a lot more credence and I think, uh, believability, if you will.
I, well, I would.
Whoever, you even.
No, I do think, I did go, I tried to go to one Charter Review Commission.
Well, that's right.
Which is a separate issue, which is great, because I got to visit and get to know the app, that worked out okay. I do think that perhaps having a consultant helper like Jurassic Park would be, would be a, a good way to start, and then I do, I'm going to recommend that the council have a conversation in terms of the legal budget as to where to best allocate your attorney resources.
Was going to be.
Money tree and back of the mall is flush, but it's not that flush.
That was going to be my, my question or concern, is we are allocating a lot of funds right now with, I think I have written down here, we were requesting, you know, TSP, hiring a consultant, sidewalk program, um, the Charter Committee support. We've also discussed, um, a strategic consultant to help us with the plan, human resources, hiring an engineer or the like to help identify sidewalks. So we're, we're, you know, we're going out to that tree a lot. So my question would be, can we provide support to the Charter Committee, but in a way that we have like a one-time work session with Jurassic, or something where they're not consistently coming or providing feedback, but maybe they can review our charter and municipal code and then come provide general, um, where they see conflict? So that way it could be kind of a one-time work session versus an ongoing paying per consultant over the course of a year.
That would be a work session.
I think it would.
All attend, all.
We could, yeah.
That's a great idea, I'm all over that.
Okay, somebody else rewrite this.
Can I say something?
We were just kind of all.
I have a suggestion.
Sorry, in the future, could you just wait until it's recognized, because we're all talking at once, so in the effort to do an orderly meeting.
Other, other people are talking.
I, I understand, but in the effort to maintain an orderly meeting.
Absolutely. Well, let's all, let's all do that.
Please address.
Okay, I have a suggestion, I think would be a good, um, hybrid in further into what the mayor is suggesting. I, I think we should do a work meeting, I think we should be giving guidelines as to what the council would like to see done with the charter and the municipal code, and in conjunction with Jurassic Park, give us their best, um, practices and the things they've already identified. In other words, they've already, they've already done some of the heavy lifting, but now the council, we as council need to decide, what do we want our charter changed? What do we want added? Do we want to change the charter regarding the sidewalk situation? That's one area that has come up tonight. Um, do we want to have our charter be a little bit more balanced with city council really having power, um, more power than, than they've had in the past with staff? There's a lot of issues that need, the council needs to decide, um, by itself and in conjunction with an expert, and of course, we really need Missy's counsel and guidance as well. And we can do that, maybe we need one session for council and then another session with Jurassic, or maybe we need one session with council and Jurassic and one session with the charter.
I, I would, I would like to, um, because you're right, Jurassic has already done a lot of, they identified a lot of things. What I would think would be a good way to go is ask Jurassic to formally actually look for different things that are conflicting, because they did give us, oh, as I was looking through, I saw this, or I saw this. So to direct them to formally look and give us a list of things that conflict, and we could do a work session with the Charter Review Committee, and then if we want to do another one with just council and the Charter Committee, then we can, then we can go from there. Does that sound like a, a good process for that? You're writing your.
Well, yeah, I probably need to say, I think to hire Jurassic Charter Review Committee with, I, um.
Where?
Well, because, because if, once you write the charter, then you change your ordinances to fit charter, right?
Can we make it broad and just say hire Jurassic as, um, a consultant for the council and Charter Review Committee?
Uh, to, as a consultant.
To provide guidance.
And it's called Jurassic Parliament.
Parliament.
Jurassic Parliament.
I know, and I.
Okay, I move to.
Do we need a motion?
She's, we're drafting it at the moment, to hire Jurassic Parliament.
To Charter Review Committee.
That was just for the work session, for that, or for that training that we did. Jurassic Parliament to provide.
Okay, so what I wrote is, is I move to hire Jurassic Parliament as a consultant to Charter Review Committee for guidance to write a new charter.
Well, we don't need them to write a new charter. We just.
No, no, for guidance to write, or, unless to, if you just want.
I think just to provide support and guidance to the council and Charter Review Committee.
I think we should.
Can we leave it broad?
Can we leave it broad and just, we'd like to make a motion to hire that, Jurassic, and to help give us, give the city council some guidance, and the city council can then guide the Charter Committee and give them guidelines based on our expertise.
So we're going to keep it, we're going to keep it broad, and let's say, I move to hire Jurassic Parliament as a consultant to provide guidance to the Charter Committee, to the Charter Committee and city council.
Charter Review Committee, right?
Charter, Charter Review Committee and city council.
Okay.
That be your decision.
Do we need to attach a dollar amount to it, or a ceiling, or?
Uh, so Jurassic Parliament, when they came in to do the training for us, about four hours, two, I can't remember, uh, but that was about $5,000. I'm rounding it up a little bit.
Okay.
Um, I would probably not see it going over $10,000.
Do you think we would need eight hours? I think we just try.
I don't, I don't think we need eight hours, we probably can do it in four.
They are, yeah, they already.
That's like, that's like work session, yeah, doing a work session in four hours.
And I would, I would think it'd be more as like almost a training, where they can provide us the information that they had found, where we could look at and dive deeper into.
They have it on the calendar, I have.
Yeah, they did, they did a lot.
They did some, yeah, but then there were some conflicts that we had discussed, like, oh, I didn't see that one. So I would just like them to look through all of it and give us all of their, um.
Counselor Olson's question, which was how much will this cost? I think we can safely say it'll be under $10,000.
Are you okay with under $10,000?
Yeah, I think that's a good estimate.
I could also come back, I mean, I'm going to need your guys' approval anyway.
Right.
It'd be over my threshold to approve, so.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, okay.
All right, I move to hire Jurassic Parliament as a consultant to provide guidance to the Charter Review Committee and city council.
All right, discussion?
I would just, I would just like to see if we could get a timeframe and get a work, because I know the holidays and everything, and the new city manager, but it would be nice if we could get a work session ASAP, like to get that foundational piece underway while we have time before the new year, and, um, as Counselor Gearhart said, we don't want to waste these precious volunteers' time. If you could give them some guidance, they're kind of operating on the dock right now.
I think we would need to at least wait till the next council meeting to approve a, um, a, a contract, but then, yes, getting it on the.
And I think one thing that we'll have to look out for and be careful of is the time element, you know, they may say it'll cost, you know, take you four hours for this training, and, and we need to remember, they're training us, and it would be very, very easy for us as city council people to get into a debate about what needs to be changed and what doesn't need to be changed.
Yeah.
So whoever's doing it would have to steer us.
It would be good to just get where does our charter conflict with our municipal code, and then we can go from there with further guidance to the Charter Review Committee.
We, I disagree. I think we in the city council owe a duty to our residents for us to look at the charter ourselves and see, are there areas that we feel as city guiders of the city of King City that we need to add, subtract, edit? We owe a duty, and if nobody else wants to do it, I'm happy to volunteer to help.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you on that, so.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and go to a, oh, did you have further discussion?
I just, yeah, one more comment is, uh, I think Jurassic Parliament as a consultant, part of what I would look at for guidance is for them to tell us what are best practices in city charters of communities of approximately our size, because the size of the community also determines, you know, so, I'm not, I mean, it doesn't need to be part of this, it just.
But, Rodney has direction.
Kind of, um, marching order.
Good, all right, um, let's go to a roll call, vote. Counselor Gearhart?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counsel President Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Ardidi?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven zero. Awesome, good job, everybody. And, um, last item before report, we have our update on our community poll results and discuss next steps. You can do whatever you would like, actually, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself so that everybody knows who is talking, and then, no, I'm just kidding, you can do it from there.
Hi, everyone, my name's Erica Herring, I am the Public Information Officer here at King City. Um, for those who are unfamiliar with this, being really, uh, I went with the council on a, uh, city council survey for 2025. Um, it was very broad, we just really wanted to get some immediate feedback on things that they would like to see the city council work on, uh, as well as things for 2026, uh, and then just get a general idea of how people are feeling in King City and where places begin to improve and places were doing really well. Um, I was really pleased with the responses that we got, and I do really want to say for those that did take the survey, thank you for taking your time to provide those thoughtful answers, they were great. Uh, we got 115 responses, so, um, I will say that this is kind of a broad overview of these responses. I do have everything laid out more specifically in an Excel sheet. Wanted to do a work session, kind of like dig deeper into these responses, we can definitely do that. Um, but like I said, this is just kind of a broad presentation for you guys to kind of understand what I got as feedback. Um, and so just if we have any questions, comments, we'll save them towards the end, but like I said, we can always do a work session or something like that to kind of dig deeper into it. So the survey goals was definitely, uh, we wanted to open that stronger lines of communication between the community and this new city council. Uh, we wanted to determine focus areas for the city council in 2025, 2026, um, and this is supposed to aid in that creation of a strategic plan for the city council, um, and then show the city that the council is listening to their concerns and are ready to take action on them, so. Um, these questions that were asked, just as a reminder, for, and for those who did not take the survey, just, your name, uh, your address or neighborhood, I didn't require it to be a very specific address if you weren't comfortable with that. Um, what issues would you like to see city council to address immediately, need asked, need to be ordered in rank of most to least important? Um, what issues would you like to see the city council address in 2026? Um, and mind you that these are all open commentary, so you have enough space to really prioritize what you wanted to feel. Um, and then what were one of the three things you'd like to see improved in King City? Um, and then this, uh, this question was a ranked one, so how satisfied are you with the quality of life? Uh, one being very dissatisfied by being very satisfied, and three kind of being neither satisfied nor dissatisfied, uh, but we did ask and request for them to explain your selection, to kind of get a better idea. Uh, here's sort of the map of responding address is, like I said, some of them were kind of general, so maybe someone said Highlands or Edgewater, so, but this is kind of the general map that I got from each response. All right, so for the survey results, this is in response to that third question, which asked, uh, to rank the issues from most to least important, um, these are kind of the general ideas. The first one, was that stopping the Fisher Road extension? This is by far the most dominant concern that people have in King City. Um, again, repeated dozens of times, strong language, uh, many residents typically reference Edgewater neighborhood and opposed of Fisher's becoming a collector road. Um, this is, again, probably not a surprise to anybody. Uh, that second one is traffic and speeding, uh, 99, 131 Fisher Road being, uh, the problem areas that most people mentioned. Um, they requested things like traffic calming measures, more speed bumps, uh, better speed enforcement, um, in addition, parking enforcement, things like that. Uh, and then general infrastructure, city maintenance, um, multiple things are kind of mentioned, there's a very specific, like, faded street signs, and then maybe, you know, um, signals not working, things like that. Um, and then there were things like a playground upgrade, permanent restrooms at the park, um, we'll dig a little deeper into that, a little further in, um, and then some lack of accountability of keeping the city own property. Uh, so question four, was, uh, this is supposed to help with the strategic goals of the council in 2026. That was that question of what would you like to see happen in 2026? Um, and then I also have some additional actionable insights, it's just a guess, there's nothing, you know, like, it was just something that, you know, in a general idea. Uh, issue number one was, of course, Fisher Road extension, why should I believe that extending it will increase traffic, you know, things for, for, and many residents trust the city leadership over this issue. Um, if possible, actual insight is preserved as a neighborhood road, not a collector alternative, but the spend upgrades were preferred.
Wow.
Uh, traffic, parking, and visitors are issue number two. Like I said, Fisher 131st, 99W, calling complaints, uh, corner visibility, especially with parking, people parking too close to the corners, people are concerned you can't see around them, people are concerned about hitting kids, things like that, um, and vehicles thrown down streets as a frustration, um, again, the traffic calming, speed bumps, and better parking rules and enforcement, um, actionable, implement traffic safety parking, generally enforcement, visibility signage, things like that. Uh, issue three, the city parking community amenities, uh, there's really, there's a big interest in improving our city park. Uh, a lot of people really, they did talk about how much they use it, how much their kids use it, how they would love to see it become like a, a stronger presence in the community. Um, so, you know, upgraded playgrounds, maybe some permanent restrooms, uh, better lighting and maintenance, maybe some more parking, um, additional ideas were including maybe a dog park, uh, community swimming pool, uh, some more green space, uh, especially the power lines. Um, so the actual insight is just to invest in park upgrades and recreational amenities to meet the growing community. Um, and then issue four is that desire for better governance and transparency, uh, they want open, respectful communications from their council, they want regular updates on the budget and decisions, uh, more civic engagement and input opportunities from council, um, and then the city manager and council to reflect their resident values. Um, frustration with past leadership dynamics, poor communication was definitely forgotten to mention there, so increasing that resident engagement, improving that transparency, and prioritizing the unity of the council. Uh, draft concerns and housing density, you know, uh, high density housing, the town homes, concerns about the changes of look and the feels of neighborhoods, um, so one of the popular actual insight is, uh, line of going and development policies, I know that gets kind of tricky and kind of a gray area, but that was just something that we were. Um, so this was that quality of life, that satisfaction, uh, my, my little section over there, that's the one, the very dissatisfied, I don't know why it didn't pop up in my, in my chart here, but it was about 4.3%. Uh, you can see most people answered a 50.9 to sort of mostly satisfied. Um, so these were kind of a general response to those city rankings, a lot of words here, um, the very dissatisfied, that the city council creates a hostile environment, uh, they're steering the cities in wrong direction, along with those unjust parking issues. Um, so the very satisfied, it's that it's a very pleasantly quiet area, visitors love to come here, they complement our city a lot, um, and there's lots about their place for kids, it's peaceful, it's clean, and people are, people do feel like this place is moving in a good direction. So you get a lot of answers here, um, but like I said, a majority of that is that 50.9 of being mostly satisfied. Um, so, one of the things that I wanted to drill down when we did this survey and to continue on with getting that public engagement and that communication, because I would love to do more specific surveys, uh, some of them was that economy and small business, that was something that was mentioned multiple times in this survey, was, I'd like to know if King City residents usually shop for their groceries, um, maybe what next, new types of businesses we would like to see, uh, maybe a farmer's market, something like that, um, transportation system, obviously the PSC, the paint travel for King City, how that's changing, what that looks like right now, um, public safety areas of improvement, traffic, parking concerns, and overall safety standards, and then parks and recreation, where people are recreating with. standards, and then parks and recreation, where people are recreating within King City, and then where we could really improve our parks and our nature areas. It was my, it was my broad overview.
Great job.
Very good job.
I have a question. Yeah, yes, councillor Cunningham, go for it.
Thank you. Hundred and fifteen responses.
Yes.
It looked like most of them were in Edgewater.
Yes.
How many people were answered from KCCA?
I had a few, not as, not as many.
Okay, so we have a, we have, we've only, the survey was just for Edgewater basically, these responses that are.
I wouldn't say it was specifically all for Edgewater, I will say that I think.
Well, they were the ones that responded.
They were the ones that were most responsive, and they were the ones that were the most heard, right?
How, how do we get the input from KCCA? What?
I was going to talk about that in my report. Should I talk about it?
I did reach out to the KCCA and I did offer the, the survey, so it wasn't, it wasn't something that, I just never heard back from anybody from KCCA also, that is one thing that I would like to also focus.
Well, give it to one of us, because we can take it to the office and get it in the newsletter.
And I'll be talking about that in a minute, too.
So, that's one of the things that have come up, so I'm going to strongly suggest that we do not build a pool. If you want some, you know, horrific pool stories, just come to some of the KCCA HOA meetings.
Erin, I really thought you did a great job in creating the questions, making them simple, and I'm not going to take offense by councillor Cunningham, because it wasn't designed for Edgewater, it's not anybody's fault that the Edgewater residents decided to, and they did that on their own, because they had already responded to it before I even sent it out, so, I don't know how you thought that out, I know you sent emails, right?
Yes, so, and I know I sent it out for our King City newsletter and our updates through their website, there is a place that you can sign up for all of the city updates, so I did use that email list. Additionally, I did repeatedly put it out on social media, so it was on our Facebook page, our Instagram page, which is that, you know, are highly visible, I know it is also difficult, because with our resident population, a lot of people don't use social media, or they're not very frequent on social media, it's one of those things that I was working within a limited amount of time, and like, so I understand that there's kind of that frustration there, but it, it wasn't supposed to be geared towards a specific area, right?
And I reached out to you, and you even gave us a paper version for those who.
Yes, there was also a paper version.
So, it was really a comment upon all of us to help you get that word out.
A lot of the people that works on our, our committee did post it up on Nextdoor, so I'm not allowed to post it on Nextdoor, because I'm not allowed to do social media, but we could ask those people that use Nextdoor to post it, because we have a few people, about a hundred people that follow on Nextdoor.
And you said you did contact KCCA?
Yes.
And you just didn't hear anything back from them?
I didn't hear anything back from them.
So, is there a little bit of a window where we can go talk to them and say, hey, you bet, hey?
I, I.
Can we do it again?
I mean, there was no specific parameters, I did close it on October tenth, so I could get these results here today.
Sure.
But if we want more results, then I'm happy to reopen it, or we can go and revisit it, like I, it's not something that like legally has to close, or strategically has to close, it was just trying to get a, a pulse.
I, I think, I think we can turn this into a good thing, really.
Yes.
I know, I talked to you that yesterday and this morning, and she wants to work with city council real bad, she wants to come over here, and, and our people should go over there, and like, like Jessica and I and Sandy did at the HOA meeting last night. So, she's really, really open to that, and this might be a good opportunity, have you met her yet?
I haven't, I haven't gotten a chance to meet her.
Okay, maybe we can set up just a quick chat, and we'll go over there and, and see what she can do.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's, I think it's important that we get obviously feedback from as much of the community as we can, and, and a lot of Edgewater did respond to it, which is great, because we need to know what they are thinking, we also need to know what folks in KCCA are thinking in, in other areas, so I think our next step is a work session to kind of dive into these results and what we need, but in the meantime, can we reopen it and, and make a more concerted effort to KCCA to like, please fill this out, we really need it.
I was going to tell you, Erin, that they're having budget meetings on next week, so that's going to bring in a lot of people, we could have some printed surveys to hand out, I'd be glad to take them down, the first meeting is Saturday, so, or Steve can take them to a vet, and they can, and give them to the people that are running the budget meetings and say, hang on your way out, complete this survey and just, and leave it, drop it in this slot, right?
It needs to be.
Yeah.
It's kind of a deadline, if people are.
I mean, people were, I mean, people ran to me and they're like, what's up there, I can hear this one.
I don't know, I think it's a friend.
I remember.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, no, I'd be more than happy, and I, we did get written responses, and what I did was I took those written responses, I hand typed them into the Excel sheet, so they did end up in this, in this presentation as well, so, but I, I understand that sometimes handwriting things is a lot easier than sending them out to type it, so I'm more than happy to do that, I'm more than happy to meet with anybody that wants to just sit down and have the conversation.
Okay, so let's add that as another work session we want to schedule, and in the meantime, and that could be kind of our deadline, is whenever we have that scheduled, you know, give Erin what, a week or so before, just to, that way we can add in as much input as we can, and take everyone's thoughts into consideration as we move forward.
Thank you.
That work.
Are you going to give them a copy of it now to give off with these, or is that?
Um, I, I mean, I can, I can email it, or I can give it to, a copy to, I don't have hard copies with me.
And we also drop a bunch of hard copies at KCCA, and then, yeah.
What deadline there do you want to give, get back to her?
So, we need to schedule a work session, so I would say right now it can be open-ended until we schedule a work session, and then we can close it a week before, and we can just put out that, that message, but it sounds like for now, hard copies are going to be taken to the budget meetings and dropped off at KCCA, and, you know, more of a.
Highland and the other communities that didn't really participate, maybe you could liaise on with them.
Excuse me, uh, need to interrupt, there is a meeting Thursday evening that I'm going to.
Sounds like a great idea for our HOA liaisons.
Yes.
Get the information out there.
But Highland, do you know when they're meeting?
Councillor Ardidi, do you know when the Highlands are meeting for their next HOA?
No.
Can you find out for me?
Yeah.
I can find, I can, I can help my dad find out if he can.
Could be great.
Yeah, I have my own meeting, I have HOA board meetings, but tomorrow night, but I've already, Erin knows, I've already, after people already submitted, I got, I got it out.
So, let's effort to get some more responses, and then we will work to schedule a, a work session and figure out a proper due date. All right, next up we have police chief's report.
Hey, Mayor's Law.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right, that's me, I'll go up from there. So, I'll make it quick in an hour and a half, next Saturday, King City PD is partnering, partnering with Fire Advanced Academy and the King City Plaza, we're on a truck or trade event, so if you're around, go to the Plaza at six P M., we'll be there, I'm doing stuff with them, so it's pretty cool, it's the first time we've done that with them.
What day did you say, sorry?
Saturday.
Sorry.
Twenty second.
What is that?
In the Plaza.
By.
King City Plaza.
By Gershon, Gershon. Oh, I didn't know they called it the Plaza.
Other than that, so the King City Police Department has been very busy in the last few weeks, I want to make sure, I know, beginning of this meeting, we talked about how super safe it is, and it is safe, but I also want to make sure we acknowledge the hard work and the things that these officers have been going through, just to highlight the last couple of weeks, we had a hit run drunk driver that was located and arrested by our brand new officer, so it was first solo DUI, second, he's doing awesome, so for him to do that, and DUIs are hard for newer officers to do, and he did a fantastic job, we've also had a domestic violence with a weapon, which suspect was located and arrested as well, had a fentanyl case, which all happened to go to OHSU and do other things, and it's pretty extensive, the back suspect was eventually associated, that was associated was located and arrested, that is what your officers are doing, they're doing a fantastic job. Also have, sorry to interrupt, we're seeing a pretty extensive large case out of King City that involves a lot of search warrants and a whole bunch of other stuff, with Facebook and other things like that, some entering into new territory, but that's all going on here, we're kicking it out as it comes in, a lot of the stuff we've been doing, our folks coming in that don't belong or live here, so we're holding them accountable for their criminal actions, and then Police Department's schedule is nearing twenty four seven, we're getting there, we restructured a little bit, starting this week actually, where we are approaching twenty four seven, so we're almost there.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city managers' report.
Can I, am I allowed to respond to anything?
Yes. Remedy, that would be great.
I just wanted to thank Lieutenant, you really helped us with that really bad nuisance car, well, actually it was your whole staff that helped us get that nick, it took a couple of weeks, but I did notice, and I have mentioned to you, that I was on a Saturday, I had one of your officers, I called non-emergency, anyway, he was running all over the place, and I had to wait a really long time, and the person that was.
That would be the fentanyl deal.
Was that that guy that I called and told you?
The moment, obviously this job, unfortunately, it.
Fortunately.
Still think that one time or, yeah, but that, that case took priority in that moment, so.
Do you need more sticks?
Of course, right, and this is, that's not.
Nothing.
Uh, Tiger, we, we ended up in Tiger today, we had a pretty big incident across the highway today, where our officer ended up helping, we, when that happens, we have mutual aid, we go help Washington County, they help us, we help Tiger, they help us, and high priority calls, actually, the three closest units are dispatches, doesn't matter what patch you wear, so, we do have a very good working, longstanding relationship with outside agencies, where we will have an officer deputy there if it's a high priority.
We have a personal question, about a week and a half ago, on Highway ninety nine towards Tiger, they had ninety nine shut down on both directions, and twelve police cars surrounding the bus, can you tell me what happened?
Unfortunately, it was a fatal crash with a pedestrian.
With a trimethus?
I'm not sure the full.
There was a trimethus, there was a vehicle versus bicycle, well, other way around.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all you, for hearing all of you, it really makes a difference.
You guys are being supportive.
Right, police chief's report. I mean, the other part, wait.
I get it.
You gotta scoop my thing up, sorry.
I was kind of going to bounce around all over the shirt a little bit, but, uh, key comes, people are going to do the audio visual for, in here, we got the additional bid for the items, it's an additional fourteen thousand right around here, so at, bring this up to thirty thousand, which is underneath the forty thousand, and we just wanted to make you aware of that, and so that we could go ahead and proceed.
Does it look like a three fellow to you?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a lot, it was.
It is?
Yeah, and so, with your nod of the head, we're going to go ahead and just kind of keep, get that going. Also, we're running into issues with our phone service here, and we're, phones just aren't working at, well at all, and so we literally will come in after a weekend, and everybody's phone is out of service, and desk phone, and so, we tried to sever that service based on our dissatisfaction with it, and they said, well, you owe us seven thousand dollars, twenty seven year contract, and so, we're looking at what, what are we paying compared to what's worth to go ahead and sever the contract, and so we'll get back to you a little bit more, but it's something that's going to be coming probably in the next meeting.
Which provider?
Uh, Reagan Central? And so, we, we've got a backup in place, if, if, that's the way we go, but we did put in more additional orders to, hey, you can come check out our service in here, so this has been going on for way too long. So, if, when the phones do work, you're kind of like, why are the phones all ringing? Well, that's what it should be every day. Which I, which I'm kind of, is, um, whether I was going to tell you guys or not, because it's nice when it's quiet, but, you know, we need to be able to take care of business.
Absolutely.
So, it's probably something you'll see coming up. Also coming up that, for planning and for city councils, so, the budget inventory was approved, and so that's going to be going in front of the planning commission?
Yeah, planning commission, and then eventually the council.
Eventually to the council as well, I don't know enough about it to go into a deeper dive for you with that, but just letting you know that that's coming, and then I, September twenty fifth, I traveled down to Eugene to watch Aron Long Smith get the president's excellence award. Your municipal reporters, right? So, the cool part about, the cool part about this, besides me getting to go to Tracktown Pizza, was, was the senior reaction of the people after Ronnie got the award, and the genuine kindness, and how they treated Ronnie with the hugs and the congratulations, was impressive, and that, you know, enough people thought of him to do that, and that was, to me, as somebody who, you know, supervises people and everything like that, that meant more to me, that seeing the reaction of all the other people for Ronnie.
And I saw him on Facebook, I saw the picture, or you took his hand?
Yeah, 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 there was a picture of me, too, when I decided to.
That's like, that's my favorite one.
There was some information, some engineering information, I don't know if you guys got to see it, I can go over.
Sure, is that in the staff report section?
Um, yeah, I was going to roll right into it.
Okay, I thought about Key Code, when are they starting, finishing?
Key Code, so, they're hoping around November fourteenth, but that depends on, it, it's because of the supply chain.
Really, okay.
November fourteenth to start?
Yeah.
Depending on having all the equipment.
Yeah, and if they're, the tariffs.
Okay, all right, go ahead and move on to the.
You want me to roll into?
Move on into it, staff report.
I can, from our company, just permit this, you can, December, both of these are all just, you know, local. Residential mechanical, residential for residential plumbing, for residential building, they anticipate October to be about the same, the kind of the area of, of probably more that we pay attention to is, I live October tenth, there were twenty one single family permits that are ready, as Kingston Terrace, the new, the new area, and as soon as Clean Water Services gets their stormwater retention, temporary stormwater retention, and so they'll start, you'll start to see not just the model homes that are already up, they'll start to see more, more being built there. PG F and R is, they do have their temporary living board has been installed, inspected, waiting for a little bit more to be done there, and October one hundred fifty three hour permits. Suba Villas, which is like, that's hundred thirty first in Fisher, waiting for a certificate of occupancy issued in twenty twenty five, the blocks twelve through sixteen are ready to go once they pay their fees to the city. Then there's, we can see the producer, I'm not going to go over that. I don't know, but I think that is all I have for that little bit of staff.
The engineers.
I can, oh, there is, there is, from full job feedback, yes, you're kind of random in there, there. Still continued construction inspection down with, with Kingston Town Center, with one, phase one and two, I know a lot of the things, again, temporary stormwater has to be completed, and then they can pave, and then once they can pave, that's when they start to, to build a lot. We, you know, more about the paving with, with improvement plan, where they improved additional paving of public one hundred twenty nine.
The plan on doing, paving one hundred twenty nine and that other suite.
Yeah, Royal.
Going to Royal T Court next week.
Okay.
So that moved again to where they're talking this--
Yeah, it's just because of the weather. Weather.
Did they, did that repair get done, Erin, on that corner of where you said the water was accumulating? What happened with that?
So it's still in the works. Basically, from my understanding, is that someone went out, took a look at the issue. It is pooling and that is an issue of up settling. And so that is the responsibility, again, that's my understanding, is the responsibility of the contractor to go in and fix that. Yes, yes. And so they are going to effort to improve that. And they have identified that the problem, they're not going to just push it along like they do and plan to immediately fix that problem.
Is that on your radar? Because that was the whole Jenny Lawson thing that Counselor Gerhart and I went out and helped supervise with that river of ID trees. And Max and Ronnie were really instrumental. And I heard through the grapevine that there's a problem there after that big, heavy rains we've had the last few weeks, that there's water accumulating and the people are not happy. And they wanna make sure that it's on our radar to get it fixed by K T.
Yeah, it's on our radar.
Is it on our radar?
Oh, yeah.
And everybody's been advised? Okay, cool.
And Council has begun to preparation estimate design construction projects for street improvement for 2026. Did we get the list of year by year what we're looking at?
Yeah, Max did send that to me. It's going to go out. I'm gonna put it out probably tomorrow morning.
And that'll be on social media where we're just listing the streets, what year, what streets we're looking at on, you know, repaving.
A lot of people have been looking for that.
To improve that. So that's gonna be--
I'll also put it up on the website.
Good.
And then Council's been assisting with the grant applications. Followed Met Trail Grant was recently approved and being prepared for Twelton River Park Trail. Headcut stabilization design. I'm assuming that's the, where the pipe, that where the washout is?
Yeah, the washout, yeah.
The washout in-- And--
Any further staff report from?
Well, the public information, I just want to bring to attention, obviously, the breast cancer awareness month in October. If you're following King City Police Department on social, you saw that we put out the passions. You can see our pretty pink passions, they're wonderful. So that's out there. It is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, that is out on socials as well. So I just wanted to bring attention to that, some things they'll see out there. And then additionally, the council bios, save for sanders. I'm not sure what went wrong there, but I'll correct that. But the council bios are up. And then also, what I've been efforting is the business directory. There is now a designated business directory page for King City businesses. It's going to have the addresses, the phone numbers, and the websites of King City businesses. It's a work in progress. A good portion of them going. So it's, like I said, it's kind of my work in progress right now, but there is now a King City--
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm working with KCCA, bringing it to us, trying to coordinate also with Sutterfield residents for doing a kind of stand seminar for-- Apparently, target tours are more vulnerable residents, but obviously will be open to everyone who wants to attend. I told KCCA, because I understand all the holidays and everything is coming up, we get back to them, go and make sure it's-- As submitted as possible for many people to attend. Yeah, it's been the worst.
Have a date, you'll let us know?
Probably next year.
I have a quick question for the interim City Manager. On the wetland inventory being approved, just so I can understand this better, I would have thought it would have been approved a lot earlier in the development of the Kingston Terrace.
I understand the question. I'll have to get back to you with an answer and stuff. So it's something that, you know, we'd have to talk to Max with and, or I'm looking to you. Yeah, 'cause it's, you know, it's something that's, it's been a two-year process, I believe it has. And so it's been, it's taken a while, but we can definitely come back to that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, let's move on to Mayor's and Counselors' reports. Counselor Gerhart, we'll start with you.
Okay. I got a long one, so you might wanna save me to the end.
Go for it.
All right. So last Friday, I attended an online hearing at the Oregon Ethics Commission. Did anybody else, Jan, were you there?
Yeah, I did. I was at the Gator.
Oh.
I was online.
On Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Continue.
It was to discuss allegations that Mike Weston had made against me and some of the other City Council members. Specifically, the allegations were that I and two other City Council members met and had a quorum prior to our meeting of May 13th. I was voted on to City Council on the evening of May 13th. So obviously, no quorum could have possibly occurred. The commission did not find cause to proceed with an investigation, therefore, the matter is dismissed before the action will be taken. And they named off everybody that was on City Council, even people like Counselor Hartman. And not you, yeah, sure. So last Thursday, I completed a self-paced course on dealing with difficult board chair or council members. This was a class by Ann McFarlane of Jurassic Parliament. It was really a good class. The same people who conducted our meetings on mastering City Council meetings. Some excellent information. Last night, Patty and I attended the King City HOA Board Meeting. It was good to see both Counselors Jessica Bragerman and Sandy Cunningham there. Firstly, they discussed sidewalk concerns, and I'll let Jessica talk about that probably later. They had a board resolution for safe amenities. They had a resolution on golf course policies. They discussed their August financials. Interestingly, the board also censured one of their board members. And I won't go into the specifics, however, state law requires that it be done in a public forum so that that person has a chance for rebuff. It was, it was interesting to watch that process. Because it legally does need to be done in a public forum. And they handled it very well. After the meeting, I spoke with Yvette Curial, the HOA Administrator. She was doing a fantastic job. Since I'm one of two representatives from City Council assigned to the HLA, Yvette and I discussed having someone from their board attend our City Council meetings, possibly a rotating member. She thought that was a fantastic idea and looks forward to much more collaboration between our two organizations. And I think maybe Erin could be a part of that, too. And this morning, I spoke with Yvette again. And she told me about an organization called CAI, Community Action Institute. There's a Western Oregon chapter right here in Lake Oswego. They provide training and education resources to community association managers. Great resource. And she said she could invite myself and other City Council members to attend their meetings free and go to free seminars, education seminars. So a great resource for us. I suggested to her that it would be nice if, maybe, and I'll talk to Ronnie about this, maybe the next time we have a-- What was our last class? On Robert's Rules of Order? We have something like that. They need to attend to. They try very, very hard, but that's a tough mountain for them to climb, I think. And so if they could attend with us, I think that'd be very helpful. Finally, Patty and I joined the table of eight of our favorite neighbors at the Twelton River Keepers Annual fundraiser. It was a great opportunity to meet other City Mayors and Counselors, enjoy a great meal, and spend way too much money on a very good cause. Glenn C, the Administrator, he's a very, very strong supporter of our efforts to keep development as far away from the Twelton River as possible. That wasn't too long.
Not even busy.
Yeah.
Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. I just wanna clarify something that I said a little bit earlier. I didn't say that, I didn't mean to say that the survey was designed for Edgewater. What I meant to say is that most of the responses came from Edgewater. So I just want to clarify that. I have talked to about 10, 15, 20 people from KCCA. And they told us, so my first question was, did you get the survey? And none of the people I talked to got the survey. So I asked them to contact you or look on the website and because I really wanted KCCA to respond to that. So I understand that it was just a small sampling of people that didn't get it. The concerns of these people that I talked to are speeding on Rosie Parkway and King George, traffic. And the people on those streets are really kinda getting beside themselves. They're just, they just would like to see something happen that stops. It'd be crazy at times. So I talked with them about that and I told them that I would bring that up. They'd like to see some action. They had some ideas about what to do with some of the streets. Remember, a couple months ago, I did that little funny presentation. So I'd like to revisit that. One of the things that I talked with all of these people about was the shopping center. And what we could do to help the shopping center fill in those empty spaces. And one lady said to me, why don't we have a Chamber of Commerce? So if we develop these businesses, these businesses, perhaps we can develop a Chamber of Commerce where we can help support them. I thought that was a great idea. One of the things that came to, just a thought that came to me in January when Martin Luther King holiday is typically a day of service kind of thing in a lot of communities. And I wondered if we could do something like that, like, you know, meet light and paint curves or something. I mean, it's gonna be raining, but if we could organize something to reach out to our community and work alongside them, cleaning up somebody's yard or something like that. Anyway, just to put that thought out there. And then I attended my first impact meeting. I'm gonna tell you that I came to that meeting, I've come to this decision in my life that I'm not sure I like Metro. I've never liked it, so I just wanna say that out loud. So I went to the meeting, I'm trying to keep an open mind, right? And I'm, they have a huge comprehensive climate change action plan based on 160 responses out of 1.7 million people, which shocked me. I mean, it was like, oh, my God. So I didn't speak, I just listened. I promise I was a good girl. So I have questions about their oversight, because they have about 1,200 people working for them. And I thought that was huge. And what is their oversight? So I'm looking forward to learning about it. Because I think that I would like to be sure and learn that we're getting, you know, our return on investment for being involved with Metro. There's a, you see their Clackamas County Commissioner or the State Representative out of Clackamas County. And I saw him speak on the news and he's trying to get Metro out of their business. So I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I'm looking forward to learning about how they spend their money. And if we get our, and if it serves our residents. I don't care how they spend it in other places. And if anybody wants to see their budget, I brought a copy. Anyway, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Taiso.
Okay, I'm gonna-- Oh, can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
This is Cheryl Wong. She's a, she's a KCCA Director.
Oh, hello. Thank you for being here.
Hope I didn't embarrass you.
All right, Counselor Taiso, go for it.
Sorry. No, 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 no. I knew you, she looked familiar and I was gonna-- How do you know her? Yeah, she's great.
Yeah, she is great. And I very much appreciate your straightforward action type of person. So first thing was, and I, this is maybe a question for Chief Happala. I had a constituent who happens to live in the King City Apartments approach meeting the other day. And she's lived there for a number of years. And more than once, she has complained about the fact that there is mold and dry rot in their apartment buildings. And so their solution was just to kind of remove some washers and dryers and not really replace anything where people had complained. And so is, does the city have any jurisdiction over the condition of the apartment buildings?
To an extent.
Like, I just--
I hope you're talking about, this was last year, I think, I dealt with the case. We did send an inspector out there and they were not allowed into the apartment. And that's as far as we can go, unfortunately, for that particular incident. But we can--
So we don't have any building code slash inspection?
We do, but it's limited. So if they pull a permit, they understand that we have to go in your house. But if somebody complains about something inside a building, we can't go into the building and inspect.
Okay, so really, your only remedy--
Is to, is civil--
It's a civil suit?
Yes.
Okay.
Civil suit. There's also the ability, the City of Beaverton has an arbitration service that will basically, any kind of problem that's east of 185th falls under them. And so if there's a complaint, they can make this complaint to the service and then they can contact them to see if they can arbitrate the situation.
Did you just sort of email me that information? And I'll pass it on to her. And the sidewalk on Fisher Road between 124th and 131st is in really awful ups and downs shape. And somebody I know did a face plant because of that.
Which side of the road?
Huh?
Which side?
On the King City side.
Okay.
And so who has jurisdiction there? Who's, or I should say, who is responsible for that, that strip of sidewalk?
Question? 124 to 131?
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure where she was walking.
Or?
124 to 131.
That's the all new sidewalk. I--
Castations?
It's sidewalk. And part of it has a brick sounding wall on the side of it.
I believe, I believe-- I don't--
Isn't that the new section?
Don't quote me on this, but I believe that is all brand new sidewalks. I will have to go out there and look.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, okay. And I went to the Metro Mixer at Durham along with the mayor. And it was, I thought, you know, they sent, which, I sent all of these documents to Ronnie and he can email them to anybody who wants them. But here is like all of the things that Metro does and all of their links if you want a copy.
I've read. Hours and hours of Metro pages.
I got you. And so the Spring Conference-- I never did report on that and I still owe it to everybody, so I'll write up my notes from that. CIS was established in 1981 and they service 98% of all Oregon cities and counties with insurance, education programs, advocacy, and training, which is amazing that they do that much. And the LOC itself, which stands for League of Oregon Cities, is working on making a template for budget and finance to help small cities sort of be able to have a framework to do a little bit of plug and play, so to speak. And then I went to half a dozen different presentations, oh, thank you, Ronnie. And so the first one he brought up, I went to the Counselors' Workshop, which was called Civility, Ideology, and Politics. And the first line item was be curious instead of furious, ask questions kindly. Leaders have a responsibility to set the standards to unify, be an upstander rather than a bystander, and adopt a civility pledge. And that is their kind of template civility pledge that you may not be able to read because I took a picture with my phone to make that, to make that so. But I did make copies for everybody if you want one of your own. But I did make copies for everybody, if you want one of your files. And I thought it was all good information. And so then, one of the other sessions I went to, I put up the next is Understanding Land, the second one was under, is if you really want to dive into the LOC conference, there is an online link, and you can look at all of everybody's PowerPoint presentations. But one of the ones I went to was Understanding Land Use Decisions, Best Practices. And the presenter was Josh Soper from Berry Ilzner. Oh, and him. And so up there are all of the ways that cities find themselves in trouble when they make land use. What to do to avoid having issues. And I don't think I need to read it. And then, I went to the next wave of civic engagement, which was a rather interesting piece. And went to a very lengthy one on evaluating city managers. And last thing I did, which was the very last speaker, was, she's a futurist, and I wasn't really quite sure what a futurist is. And she does a lot of TED Talks and things. And so her speech is actually on YouTube, and I put the link up there. And it's called A Bold and Ambitious Future. And she's really very entertaining, and she makes a lot of sense about how to look at where we are now and to try to look at where we think things are going and how to make better decisions as people. So, that is my report.
Counselor President?
And I have a bunch of things. I guess I give these to the city manager. I picked up a bunch of brochures from various organizations that I think might be helpful to you. But I'll hand them to you on the way I get them.
Couple of things. Well, the first thing I'll talk about is Edgewater. Edgewater is in the process right now. We've already identified 100 of our sidewalks. We've already marked them. We've already talked to our insurance company. And we are ready to send out our owners to our homeowners. And so I went over to KCCA yesterday, and Cheryl was coming in to invite me. And without understanding that the city was actually thinking of embarking on this, I was told prior that we were not, I went there with a finance sheet for to see if they want to join us, because when state sidewalks come down, the more sidewalks they cover, let's say, over three days, the cheaper it is for every homeowner. So if they do 200 sidewalks and they do the cutting, then it's half, you know, instead of being $400 per homeowner, it's now down to 200. So I'll abort that now that I understand that we're going to be taking a possible different approach. But what's disappointing to me, I mean, I'm very encouraged, this is on the agenda, that we're working towards it. But what is very disappointing, and I want to tell me to be patient. But it's hard to be really patient when I'm out walking almost every day, and I see all these trip hazards all throughout KCA, all throughout King City. And it's just, it's something that's been neglected for so long, that I find it to be rather urgent. I think it needs to be held, I think we need to make a decision on it sooner or later. And I, you know, we're having our Edgewater Board Meeting tomorrow night. I'll bring it up. But I think Edgewater is just going to go forward, since we've done it before. We have a precedent. We have a process. We work with our insurance company. We're working with our council. And we may just go forward, because I don't want people falling. I mean, we've already identified over 100 places where people can fall, just in Edgewater. So... And we actually had the sidewalk, if I'm still working on it, right at the semicircle at 136 and Fisher Road, which is the roundabout, the only roundabout that we have. We actually tore out that sidewalk, and it's being completely replenished at this moment, because it was such a trip hazard, it couldn't be sliced and diced. So that's one thing that I really want to say. And in talking with Edgewater, we actually started going, the board decided at the last meeting to go door-to-door. And we started it last weekend. Unfortunately, we had two people call in sick, so we weren't able to get to all 436 homes. But we got to about half. We got to about over 100 homes. And we only asked the question, yes or no, on extending Fisher Road. We didn't offer any sideline or any opinion. We just said, sir, ma'am, do you want to extend Fisher Road or not? And everyone said absolutely no. So I just want to give that feedback. The board really wanted to find out without speculation. We are going to finish that door-to-door survey. We'll have 436 responses, and I'll share that with council when I have it. Why that's important, I think, even though I know, I think it helps to reinforce, because I've heard over and over from the public that Edgewater never participates in anything. They never say anything. They never, they never come here. They never talk. They never do anything. Well, they responded to the survey. We have 436 homes. Edgewater is speaking up, and they're speaking loud and proud. They're answering the doors. They're telling us no. They don't want Fisher Road extended. They don't want the green states to have four roads going through it. They're disgusted that this has even come up again. They thought it was already adjudicated. They feel misled. They felt that they had been held hostage, and they were told, well, if you don't give us the land, we're going to take it from you. There's a lot of very strong feelings, and I think the council needs to know, and the city needs to know, that Edgewater is going to put up a big fight. So... That's what I wanted to report. Thank you.
Counselor Olson?
Is Max still on the line?
No.
So, just so I, yeah, I'll follow up with him later, but what you put in your notes, did I hear Max say that he had confidence or expressed confidence that we can avoid the banks and property?
He did.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Well, I was trying to get, I was trying to get a reservation.
That's it?
Okay. Is Counselor Diddy still online? I will make my report quick. I did attend the Metro Mixer with Jan. It was wonderful to meet a bunch of Metro folks and just kind of discuss with many of them the situation that we're in with our TFP and getting advice, recommendations, general, general information around it. So that was good. Attended the LOC Leadership Conference, and my key takeaway is there, obviously, one of them ended up on the agenda, shore up our city policies and documents. One of the workshops, it was the Chief of Police from Albany, and she was very committed to just wellness of all of her employees. And the way that she goes about that was, it's really interesting. And it was her top priority seeming from like, huh? It was very inspiring, because she was just very concerned about the well-being of not just the police, but everyone that works, that works in Albany. And then also the commitment just to transparency within the community, but also outreach. And so I love all the suggestions on, you know, let's figure out how we can keep building community within this community, because it has been broken for so long. So those are my kind of key takeaways is, how can we implement some of that? So, fast moving forward, also, I got an email from, her name is Mai, from, she's a Life Enrichment Director at Summerfield. And Erin, I'm going to forward this email to you. She was reaching out to see if we could partner with them for Community Connections for Veterans Day, where she says, we'd love to invite a veterans group or organization to our community this coming Veterans Day to honor and connect with those who've served. And then the other one is community safety concerns, was hoping that maybe we could have a police officer go over there and just get some general information. So I wanted to forward that to you. And I did go have a, kind of a Q and A with Summerfield maybe a month ago. And it really seems like they're very interested in partnering with our community here. And so just figuring out ways that we can, you know, cross over the highway and just connect people together. So I'll be forwarding that on. And that is all that I have. So, that brings us to adjourning. We are going to adjourn into an executive session.
What session, with Thompson? I heard you say November 5th?
He did say November 5th or the following week. I guess, yeah, if everyone wants to call their calendar for...
Right, leaving Tuesday, Veterans Day hours.
Yes. But if, I would say if the 5th is available, that would be...
And he had talked, when I spoke to him about this, about having a daytime, I think he suggested it would be a daytime.
He wasn't available on the 6th or 7th.
Correct. Yeah. So just the 5th, and so over like a lunch hour? Okay. I'm available for that on November 5th.
Yeah. I don't know yet. For lunch. I don't know if I can.
It's embarrassing. I'm old school. I got a paper calendar at home. But I probably can make it.
Okay. Let's go ahead and tentatively say a lunch hour on the 5th, and then, Chief, do you want to send out an email? Just to confirm that that works for, I guess, at least the majority.
Is there backup date? Would you like to look at the next, maybe Monday the 10th or?
Yeah. Yep. I'm fine with that as well.
A lunch hour, like 12:00 go on?
Like 11:30 to 1?
11:30 to 1. Thank you.
Yeah. I would be, I would be fine with Monday the 10th.
Amen.
The other days get a little dicey for me.
So we're going to do Monday the 10th?
Either Wednesday the 5th or Monday the 10th. I think we'll send out an email with priority for the 5th, but we're, well, and Vince is gone, so. On which one?
On the 10th.
Yeah. So let's just go ahead and, let's, we'll start with the 5th and see if we can get the majority of us there, and then...
Say it'd be an hour and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talking about four hours.
Yeah. So this, that will be just for him to present to us his top, yeah, top candidates. Okay. So now, we're going to go ahead and adjourn into an executive session for ORS 192.6602F, Exempt Public Records. 9/27, well, do we need a motion? Yeah. Let's get a motion to adjourn.
I move you adjourn.
I second.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, who moved? Counselor Tysoe moved.
I second.
Choose anybody as a second. Meeting adjourned, 9/27. Let's, let's take five minutes to stretch.